I think that's the best way. The EVA motion to move the second comment up. Don't do it. That's what I mean, to move it up so we can. Yeah, we just move them up. Get them out of here. But be here the two times in front of anything.
Yeah.
And that one. And the board of Alderman. Yeah, we just like move it up to many people here. Move it up. Move it up. Yeah. And they want. People have to go work in the. So it's move it up. And then we can really get to this.
And I would be like, you? You always do. Here's my team, pick one else. Maybe held out. Maybe he didn't want to sell it for China. He kept holding on. They said, hey, final offer, four times a month. Okay. There's always an offer that somebody will say. There's always that line. Keep pushing it up eventually. All that's that long. I thought it stayed there. They offered to me to stay there. I'm like, I can't stay there. I got to leave on Tuesday. It's like. You could have, uh, you could have done it. Shut. I was gonna say, what are you asking me to hear? Four minutes. End of the three. Back and forth with our friends. All friends. Let's just say, you hear me from these. If I don't, I don't. I listen to you. See, as usual. Yes, yes. Trying, trying. Summertime. Summertime and, uh, you're gonna compete. Looks like a kickbox campaign or something. Okay. Goodness. Looks like a kickbox. Well, we'll see what happens. That's all. Uh. All the time. Couple of. Rangers. Drop in. It'll be a long way. A bar. Of course, A bar doesn't. Four birds.
I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order. It's Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, at 7:33 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber, which has been duly noticed in two places, including the city's website in accordance with the requirements of RSA 91A. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Sullivan will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Jettie. Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I'm attending remotely due to medical concerns. I can hear everyone, and I'm alone in this room.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Doncic and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Uh, yes, Madam President. Well, first, I wanted to welcome all of our visitors here to City Hall and to the Chamber of the Board of Aldermen. I need, recognize some Nashua residents, but I think some, maybe we have some out-of-town visitors. It's, in a way, exciting because I've not seen this many people in this chamber for a long, long time, so. I know there's quite a bit of interest. But I wanted to take most of my remarks to address what most of you are here about, which is the idea that the Chinese company has bought industrial land in northwest Nashua. Now, I think you've been told a lot of things that have not been true, because I've seen these on the internet, and that people began to get stirred up, and it continued with serial false statements. Uh, and I will take a minute to correct some of those. But before I do, I don't think people generally understand that this company came to Nashua as part of a state economic development initiative. Now, let me repeat that. They were brought here by the State of New Hampshire Division of Economic Development. The project was led by a guy named Mike Bergeron, Senior Business Development Director. That's how they got here. And he visited the site with them a number of times. The company was, this Chinese company was looking for a location in the United States. It came down to two different competitive locations. One was in Maryland, the other here, and in the end, they chose New Hampshire, Nashua. Now, let me be clear about that. City of Nashua does not, um, support, the City of Nashua supports state economic development efforts. We do not stand in their way. The effort here was to create 200 jobs for our region. Neither in this case nor in any other have we ever stood in the way of the efforts of the state, regardless of what administration it is, to strengthen the economy of, of New Hampshire. In this case, it was the Sununu administration, because this occurred during the second half of 2024 into early 2025. In general, you know, we do, we do not ever object to their efforts to stimulate the economy. So that's how they got here. Now, and so in a way, you're in the wrong place. If you, if you see a problem with this, you're in the wrong place, because this was initiated and driven by Concord. So you should be in the Executive Council Chamber, or maybe in the Legislature, maybe in the Economic Development Office, but coming to Nashua to object to this, really, we, we are kind of just spectators almost to the whole thing. Um, now, and, but again, we don't, we're not saying they did anything wrong, but it was a state economic development effort. Some of the false statements. The first thing that started to get people stirred up was the City of Nashua has sold the water company. Totally untrue, never considered, never proposed, never discussed, no, complete fabrication. And I know some leading politicians put that on the internet to try to get you upset, and it did get you upset, and rightfully so, if we were selling the water company to a Chinese company. But in fact, the City of Nashua spent a lot of money and a lot of effort and a long legal struggle to make sure that a French company didn't buy the water, and, and the city bought it instead. And we've owned it ever since. The other problem with that false statement is that we couldn't sell the water company without state approval. The state PUC, Public Utilities Commission, controls everything having to do with utilities and this water company. So we could not take any kind of step like that, ever, even if it had been suggested or proposed, without state approval. And I can tell you that were it proposed, there's not a single Alderman in this chamber that would vote for that. So, for, you know, so we started out with a complete falsehood. Then the next falsehood, the city sold the water supply. Again, totally untrue, a made-up fact to get you upset. Politicians are trying to divide people. You see this, it's kind of a page out of the Washington playbook, trying to get you upset with a bunch of false statements to get you riled up and get you to come here. So completely false. We never sold the water supply. Again, never proposed, never discussed, never even an idea in anyone's head, except for the politicians who made this up. And again, if we ever tried to sell the water supply, which we never would, it would require state approval. The next false statement, that, um, uh, trying to think of all of them. The next false statement was they're going to buy all up, all the water and, and ship it to China. Well, obviously, that's not true. Now, in reality, um, uh, if this project goes forward, if this water bottling company does establish a water bottling plant in northwest Nashua, the sale of water to, by Penachuk, to this company is totally regulated and controlled by the state PUC. The City of Nashua has nothing to do with it. We don't set the prices. We don't decide who's the, the customers are. In fact, the state PUC requires legally, the Penach, and you'll hear from them in a little bit, but, um, they require legally that any customer, no matter who, no matter how big, no matter what, who they're owned by, any customer in the franchise area is, has a right to buy water from Penachuk. That's not the city. That's not even Penachuk. That's the state PUC has that rule. In addition, if this company goes forward, and if they buy water from Penachuk, the price is set by the state, state PUC. They, they set prices, um, and then, uh, for certain large customers, they give it, they, they require that Penachuk give a discount based on the amount of water being purchased. For example, another foreign company, um, the company that owns Anheuser-Busch, a, a Dutch company, they buy a lot of water from Penachuk. Uh, they can, Penachuk can tell you how much, but a million, two million gallons a day, somewhere in there? And, you know, they have a special price because of the, a volume discount, but that is set by the PUC and decided by the PUC. So I think if you can accept what I'm telling you, I mean, we understand that you may have concerns about this, um, but this is not really the place, because we don't really have control any of this. Uh, you, if you think the state's economic development efforts are misguided or misplaced, you should be talking to state economic development, to the governor, to the governor's council, to the legislature. So one other false statement, one of the politicians said that the city was the first city in the state to issue a water permit to a Chinese company. Well, let's go through that. City does not issue water permits. We have no legal authority. We have nothing to do with water permits. Uh, only the state PUC does that. So thank you for coming. Thank you for expressing your concern. Um, but, um, and, you know, you, you've signed up, and you have a right to speak for three minutes at the end of the meeting. But again, you know, you, you may be frustrated and angry, but these are not really the people you should be angry with, if you are frustrated and angry. So with that, Madam President, I will go on to, uh, something else, a little more mundane. Um, it's very hot. We're in the middle of a, you know, a heat streak, and we do have cooling stations, so I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that, or cooling areas. We call them cooling centers, sorry. Um, the, those exist at the Pheasant Lane Mall. Everybody knows where that is, from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. At the Nashville YMCA on Stadium Drive, from 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM. At the Nashville Public Library, from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And at the Nashville Senior Center, which is over on Temple Street, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. In addition, the city pools, for those who want to go swimming, are open. There's Centennial Pool, Crown Hill Pool, the Rotary Pool, uh, there's a Greeley Park Waiting Pool, and there's a splash pad on National Street. So anybody, especially senior citizens who are affected by, negatively affected by the high heat, should consider going to those places if, you know, you don't have air conditioning or whatever. Um, anyway, that, with that, I'll, we, there's a lot on, on the agenda, a lot of people here to speak, so Madam President, I will, um, conclude.
Thank you. Response to the remarks of the mayor. Alderman Moran.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I'm gonna try to do this delicately if possible. Um, I'm also frustrated by what I've seen on the internet, but I think it's very, um, reasonable to assume that a billionaire or a multinational company, or even a domestic company, would poison, uh, the people of the city. You, you don't have to look any further than the ingredients in the bag of Doritos. Uh, so I think people are right to be concerned when they are told that there's a, uh, something scary that could potentially happen. That's just human nature, and it's upon us to, um, help, uh, people gain information that they trust, to learn, uh, more about what is happening in this city. Uh, I, for one, um, uh, I think people struggle, especially some of the politicians who are u- using fear tactics to, to boost their own, uh, political campaign by talking about poisoning the water and all these other things, and avoiding the, the, the conversation that China is an economic rival to the United States, and if we don't do something now, uh, they're going to surpass us. And while I don't support, um, the idea that our water's being poisoned, I sure do understand that it's an economic advantage for a foreign adversary, and that's something that should be talked about, should be listened to, and it's quite upsetting to hear that the state, uh, decides to use the grant, uh, the granted advantage in the economic powerhouse that's Nashua, that funds a great deal of this state, uh, to funnel cash back, uh, to a foreign com- uh, nation. That is our adversary. That, that is true. Uh, but for people to think that our water's gonna be poisoned, that, our, we would crush them in a war like that. That is an act of war, uh, and we would respond, our government. Tell me that the federal government wouldn't respond in kind. I can't, no, no one could say that we would not respond in kind. The problem is, this is a soft power move economically to take away our advantage, uh, in the economy. And yes, it'll have a so- a soft impact on our own local economy, but we have to stop playing hardball with nations that devalue their currency, manipulate their markets, and take advantage of the free market that we have here. And it's not, uh, feeding into the, the, these, uh, stigmas of other nations, and it's just economic data. It's math. Uh, you can, you can see that, uh, our GDP is, uh, no longer what it was, and we shouldn't be giving countries who are, who don't have our shared values of democracy a leg up. And, um, I do disagree with some of the, the folks that are spreading these, uh, just, I'll see the remainder of the comments for later on, but it's just frustrating. Uh, but we shouldn't. We've never gotten in the way of the state trying to, uh, boost jobs in our city, but, um, when it comes to foreign national companies that happen to be our enemy, we should be demanding that the state do a little bit extra vetting.
Anyone else? Alderman Clemmons?
Uh, thank you.
Can you please not? We've got a long night to get through. Please don't. I understand you agree, but we've got a long night ahead of us.
Thank you, Madam President. I will try to be brief. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, agree with the remarks of the mayor. Um, this is, uh, whether, whether you think the points are valid or, or not valid, really doesn't matter, because the jurisdiction behind the resolution to all of, of everything that's been brought up lies with the state. It lies with the Public Utilities Commission. It lies with the House of Representatives, the Senate, the Executive Council, the governor. It lies with, uh, the Department of Economic Development. But all of those are at the state. New Hampshire, and one of the points I wanted to enhance the mayor's comments is New Hampshire is a Dylan Rule state. She should look that up, because what that means is that Nashua can own, the Nashua government can only do what the state of New Hampshire allows us to do. Otherwise, we have to follow the laws of New Hampshire. So there is no ability for Nashua to even consider responding to any of the, you know, things that are going on. This is a state-level issue. And I agree, like with Alderman Moran, saying that, you know, we shouldn't be having, uh, questionable foreign countries with their, with those companies and assets coming in and doing business in the state. I agree with that. I think it was a mistake, probably by the Sununu administration, to, to even pursue this. Um, but again, it goes back to this, this is a state issue. And so I would encourage everybody here, please speak, say, say what you want to say, but bring this conversation up to Concord, because that's, that's where it belongs.
Alderman Senate?
Thank you, Madam President. Just real quickly, I'd like to, um, piggyback off the mayor's comments and, and really encourage people to parse the information that they're given. Uh, information flies at a nanosecond online, and, you, you know, I think many of us are familiar with the old, um, the old adage of believing half of what you see and none of what you hear. That's even harder today, in 2025. Um, I, I should have brought copies with me, but there, there's a map, for instance, it's floating around, accompanying a lot of the stories. And I spent hours looking at it going, where is this? I've lived in Nashua for 30 years, and it looked like no geographic area I've ever seen in the city before, because it doesn't exist. It doesn't exist in the city, and it doesn't exist in the state. It's an AI-generated map. You can tell by looking at some of the features as you dig in deeper. And it's a scary map, because it shows that the locations that are pertinent to the story are right on top of each other. I'm not saying they're not close, but they're not as close as this map says. So really parse the information. If something, especially if you've lived in the city for five, 10, 15, 30 years, if something doesn't seem right, there's probably a chance that it's not. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, you know, to their points, facts matter. Um, I feel like almost, you know, that first story was a kind of a red scare, almost like we were going back to the 50s, you know? Uh, you throw that story out there that we sold Penachuk to the Chinese, and obviously people would get mad about that. I would get mad about that. But, but missing the facts on that, that it can't happen, and I'm afraid that a lot of us, some of us spoke out here, but there was others that could fix the story and didn't go out and say anything. And to me, that's a part of it. When we don't have a newspaper, or, sorry, a strong newspaper, they're probably out there in the crowd, but the fact that we don't have a strong newspaper anymore, um, Inklink's good, and they're starting to get the story out there, but not having that, that daily newspaper like we used to in our hands that had more facts, I guess, hurts. And it's up to us to get out there and say, this isn't true, this is why, this is the facts. And I tried to, tried to prod people in this chamber to do that. Some did, some didn't, just because I think in some ways it's a political thing, and it shouldn't be. Um, you know, the, then there's some state reps here, and they'll probably talk about the new state statute that limits or stops foreign companies, so, certain foreign companies from buying, uh, and they'll know more about it than I do, so I'm, I'm generalizing, generalizing. But this company came in before, they were grandfathered in, they were before, for the law. So, um, would I, do I want all of Communist China to buy up places in Nashua? Of course not. But we have foreign companies right here in Nashua now that are, the Cannon Company, Can One, owned by a Philippines company. 200 employees, they're doing great, and over in Ward Seven. You know, Daniel Webster College, unfortunately, is also purchased by a foreign company. It's not being used at all. They pay their taxes. That's right next to the airport. If anybody should be flipping out, they should have been doing that years ago. That's literally right next to the airport. You know, so it, it's, it, it's, it's, we just need to learn the facts, and legally, we can't do anything. If we could, we, we would step in, but if we step in, or we stop the water supply to them, we stop them from buying water, we would be breaking the law as a city. Otherwise, maybe we could do something, but we can't. So I just want to leave it at that.
Alderman Cle.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. To, to all that my colleague has said, and to, um, the at-large, um, my colleague who's at-large, who commented about that we are a Dylan state, I remind my constituents over and over again that we are a Dylan state, which limits what we can do here in this chamber and in this city. Um, and I, and I do, I tell everybody, look that up. You know, there's Home Rule, and there's Dylan state, and a Dylan state basically says we have to do whatever Concord allows us to do. There's the, you will do, or shall do, and you may do. And there's a lot of shalls and will do up in Concord, um, which limits exactly what we can do. You know, for instance, uh, we, we can't set speed limits of unposted signs greater than 35 miles an hour. I know. Um, so that's a real rough one. Um, we learned that the hard way. But, um, just, just as a side note, but in, in all honesty, if this were something that someone really cared about and didn't try to make polit- politics out of this, um, those politicians that went to the press to decide to break this story, they would have come to the mayor, or they would have gone to Penachuk and asked the questions before going to the newspaper to break the story. So trust me, this was a political ploy, and that tells the whole story. They went to the newspaper. They decided they were going to break this story. They didn't come to the mayor. They didn't ask the mayor the question. They didn't go to Penachuk and ask them what was going on. They went to break this story, and that tells you everything. That tells you that they were just trying to sensationalize it, they were trying to scare all of you. And again, please, speak your mind. I told my constituents today, come, talk, ask the questions. You have three minutes to speak at the end of this meeting, but also listen and go up to Concord, speak to the people up in Concord. Ask Governor Sununu, why did he allow this to happen? Why did he have his economic people bring these in? Why didn't he vet them? Why is it suddenly Governor Ayotte right now is suddenly up in arms, and why isn't the AG's office doing anything about it? This is so important, why isn't the AG's office investigating it? So, again, thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, just real quickly, I totally agree with everything the mayor said, and I work very closely, like several in the chamber here, that with, uh, former Alderman McCarthy on buying the Penachuk, and I, for one, would never, never vote to sell the Penachuk or not protect them 100%.
Alderman Govea?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, yeah, it's been pretty crazy, a couple of months in Ward One. Uh, having this building be in the ward, we've heard just about every story in the book, and I feel like the last probably two months has just been, as we said, and I think all 15 of us have done this, is just correcting the record. Uh, is correcting the record that it's not for sale, we're not selling it. Now, at a bigger, broader level, is there an issue here? Yeah, I, I do, I think there is. I, I, on this issue, I do agree with Congresswoman Goodlander. This is a very big red flag, and I, I wholeheartedly believe that. Now, with that being said, I, I think tonight we'll hear from our friends over at Penachuk, who have been very transparent, at least with me, throughout this, uh, process, and I think we'll be able to answer a lot of questions. the mayor the question. They didn't go to Penachuk and ask them what was going on. They went to break this story. And that tells you everything. That tells you that they were just trying to sensationalize it. They were trying to scare all of you. And again, please, speak your mind. I told my constituents today, come, talk, ask the questions. You have three minutes to speak at the end of this meeting, but also listen and go up to Concord, speak to the people up in Concord. Ask Governor Sununu, why did he allow this to happen? Why did he have his economic people bring these in? Why didn't he vet them? Why is it suddenly Governor Ayotte right now is suddenly up in arms, and why isn't the AG's office doing anything about it? This is so important. Why isn't the AG's office investigating it? So, again, thank you.
Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, just real quickly, I totally agree with everything the mayor said. And I work very closely, like several in the chamber here, with former Alderman McCarthy on buying the Penachuk. And I, for one, would never, never vote to sell the Penachuk or not protect them 100%.
Alderman Gavea?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, it's been pretty crazy, a couple of months in Ward One. Having this building be in the ward, we've heard just about every story in the book, and I feel like the last, probably two months has just been, as we said, and I think all 15 of us have done this, is just correcting the record. It's correcting the record that it's not for sale. We're not selling it. Now, at a bigger, broader level, is there an issue here? Yeah, I, I do. I think there is. I, I, on this issue, I do agree with Congresswoman Goodlander. This is a very big red flag. And I, I wholeheartedly believe that. Now, with that being said, I, I think tonight we'll hear from our friends over at Penachuk, who have been very transparent, at least with me, throughout this process. And I think we'll be able to answer a lot of questions. I think it's nice that the public was activated over something. To have the public come out and talk on an issue, that's great. And I think we're going to hear tonight, and hopefully, we'll correct some records. We'll answer some questions, and everybody can go home at least feeling a little bit more confident. But at the end of the day, we are kind of the low people on the totem pole here. The federal government, the state government kind of tell us what to do, and we go along with it, and we do the best we can here. And I think that point's gotten across through a lot of us tonight. But this is definitely an issue that has taken Ward One, and it seems, by the looks of it, a lot of the city by storm. And hopefully, we'll be able to answer any questions tonight from everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Recognition period?
None.
Discussion. I'm going to invite up the Chief Executive Officer of Penachuk Corporation, John Bovier. You can either come to the microphone, or you can have a seat, whichever you prefer.
Madam President?
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. In preparation for this discussion, I'd like to make, make a motion tonight to suspend the rules for an additional public comment period to take place immediately following the presentation from CEO Bovier. Obviously, there are a lot of folks here to speak tonight, and we under, I understand that there is a public comment at the end of the meeting. I'm asking that we move that forward to allow these folks to speak during the discussion tonight.
I'm going to take a vote of the board. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Well, point of order. What, what is the motion? Can we repeat the motion?
Sure. It's to add an additional period of public comment currently during this discussion as opposed to the end of the meeting, to allow for most of the people that are here tonight to come and speak around the, the topic that we're going to cover.
Alderman Clemens?
So is it, is it an additional public comment, or are you moving the second public comment up after the presentation?
That's a good point of clarification. I'm adding, I'm asking for an additional piece of public comment tonight.
Alderman, Senate?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to our legislative manager. Oh, actually, you, you have the clipboards. Will you be able to comfortably parse who to call upon to speak during that time based on how people have signed up?
Yeah, we only have 12, 18 people signed up.
But it indicates that they're speaking on that particular topic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Some is she. Yeah, this, this page and this page.
You're talking about an additional one. Clipboards should have nothing to do with this one.
Alderman Clemens?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I, I can't support an additional public comment period this evening. We have an agenda that is set. Folks come here, they know what to expect. We follow that agenda. If we suddenly were to start adding things, we'd, we'd be setting a bad precedent, in my opinion. It's not that I don't want to hear from people. I absolutely do. I'll be here to the very end of the meeting. But I think it's unfair to do something like that, because we set an agenda for, for a purpose. And there are other things that are, that are happening on this agenda as well. There are, there is other business that we are trying to get to. So for, for those reasons, I can't support an additional public comment period.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with my colleague. The issue that I, I have is, I think this sets a precedent. If we start to do this, we could start to have a room become filled with a, a single topic, and suddenly, we would start having people say, well, we've got a large room, let's clear the room. Let's start having an additional public comment and so on. And I just don't feel comfortable with that. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with my previous colleagues and what they say. I too want to hear from the people, but in the proper decorum of the meeting. So the good folks in waiting, I know you, you may have to wait. But keep in mind, our first and foremost job is the citizens of Nashua, and dealing with the business at hand. That's highly critical on the material. We've got 17 pages in the agenda tonight that we've got to go through. And I would hate, I'm not saying hearing from the good people would be a waste of time, but what we come to find out, and the truth is, it's extinguishing a brush fire that we didn't ignite, that was ignited falsely, a case of arson by somebody. So I think, if you please allow us and be patient, I would appreciate it, that if we can get to the business at hand for the citizens, and then, ladies and gentlemen, you got me all night if you wish. So.
Alderman Gavea?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll, I'll support the motion at hand. Being a vice chairman of P E D C and dealing with a lot of other chairmen, there's been times we've had public hearings, and we've taken stuff out of order on the agenda, because we've done a public hearing, we've had the public here, and in the next order of business, we would special order something to the top, so they didn't have to sit through a presentation of something else. So I'm not sure it really interrupts too much. I know that in the past, we've done things, especially in a committee meeting that I've done. We've done a public hearing, we've brought in that piece of legislation to the next order, and then we've gone on to other presentations inside the committee.
And typically, those are invited by this board. If you please, we're not going to get through this evening if you keep doing that. We, we have people invited to our meetings to give presentations. We did not set a meeting for this group of people. I'm glad they're here, but that was not part of our agenda this evening. So Alderman Tebow, and then Alderman Dowd.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving some things around and adding things, two different things. So in this case, we're adding another public comment. We're not moving a public comment. So that's why I, I'm not going to support it either. I don't, I think it sets a bad, a bad precedent, and I don't, I don't want to support it tonight.
Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, we have always had an issue with adding things to the agenda, because if it's not on the agenda, it's, we can't add it because people aren't made aware of it. If you wanted to move the second public comment up, that's a difference, but that's not what we're, you have before us.
Alderman Sullivan?
Madam President, I'd like to amend my motion. And I'd like to amend it to move this period of second public comment up to the beginning of the meeting during the discussion. For Penachuk Water, please.
Can we just take a vote? It's going to be a long night. Alderman Cle.
Thank you. I'm sorry, but I can't support that either, because I, I did tell my constituents that they would have a, a chance to speak if they wanted to at the second public comment. And they know that that's at the end of the meeting, so they may not come until the end of the meeting, as others do too. So I would have a definite problem with that. So I would vote no on that as well. So I apologize.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
No.
Alderwoman Timmons?
No.
Alderman Moran?
No.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Alderman Gavea?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Clemens?
No.
Alderman Senate?
No.
Alderman Tebow?
No.
Alderman Cle?
No.
Alderman Dowd?
No.
Alderwoman Kelly?
No.
Alderman Wiltshire?
No.
Three ayes, 10 nays.
And that motion fails. All right, I'm going to go on to recognize the CEO of Penachuk.
Madam President, for the record, John Bovier, the Chief Executive Officer of Penachuk Corporation. I'd like to acknowledge, thank you, Mayor Donchus, for your, your clarity, the clarity that you added at the beginning of this meeting. And I, and I hope in many ways to continue to echo that. But as, as the, as the, you know, public water utility here in this area, we are, you know, we have certain obligations, and we carry them out. And we are very serious about carrying those out fair and effectively, and for the benefit of all of our customers. First of all, Penachuk, as the mayor said, we're not for sale. You all would be the first to know it if we were. And it would be your decision, as the sole shareholder, to, to move that, that forward. We're not, Penachuk is not selling any land. We're not selling any, or giving up any water, rights to water, or to withdraw water, to do any, any of the such. That is not, that is not the role that we play here. AD Northwest Boulevard is a private business. Penachuk has never had any ownership interest in it, doesn't have any ownership interest. It's a, you know, a, a private transfer of, of ownership. AD Northwest Boulevard has been a customer for many, many years, and continues to be a customer within, within our service area and our franchise, of which we are obligated to provide service, as was stated by the mayor. There have been, as some media reports, there is no secret agreements. There is no special agreements. There's literally nothing of the such. AD Northwest Boulevard, the representatives and the owner of AD Northwest Boulevard, as the mayor had mentioned, were brought to us and other utilities, EverSource, City of Nash was SOR, Natural Gas. And there were, what we would term as due diligence meetings on their behalf. Those were conducted on two occasions, and I believe, if I have my dates right, one was, I think it was November 14th, and one was December 16th of 2024. Those were due diligence meetings that we see as a utility, pretty much every commercial or industrial project, changing commercial or industrial projects, come in and meet with the utilities to make sure that they, the utilities can provide them the service that they need to do those processes that they are seeking to perform. Those were, those meetings were held, our engineering staffs of all the different utilities, you know, confirm that service is available. In our case, service is available. It's the, our average day demands that are leaving our treatment facility these days are about 12 million gallons a day, probably a little bit higher today than the other days, because it is warmer. But over average, throughout the course of the year, we produce about 12 million gallons a day. It was expressed to us that this company, the owner of AD Northwest Boulevard, was seeking to have a bottle in operation, where they would make teas and beverages and the like, and that they would be looking between 1 and 2 million gallons a day. Okay, so in theory, we would jump to about 14 million gallons a day. Our treatment plant, okay, our treatment plant has capacity to produce and treat more than 30 million gallons per day. It's here to support the community and, and, and all of the, all of the, the activities of the community. We have the ability to withdraw from the Merrimack River and from Penachuk Brook greater than that. So it's not like we're saving water for one thing or another. If we don't use the water, it literally just passes right by us. Right? But we have that capacity. It's within our permits that have been issued by the state and the Environmental Protection Agency. Right? When we look at, I know there was a question, and it was a good question that was raised, you know, where do we see demand going in the city? Okay, and in our, in our, in our service areas? I will be, I'm happy to report, even though that population has gone up, the actual use, per capita use has been going down year over year. Now, we still are selling more water, because we've had more growth, more development, but people are using less water, which is a good thing. And I think people have become much more cognizant of wise uses of water. I actually drive around the city, and I see very few sprinklers these days that are watering the yellow line. And, or on during a torrential rainstorm. So congratulations, customers. You guys are doing some really good work. When we look at AD Northwest Boulevard, the question was asked, can you get 1 to 2 million gallons of water to us today? In the due diligence, we informed the, the proponent of the project. We said, yes, we can treat that water. We have no issue with the quantity. However, however, because of that larger demand, they would have to make upgrades to one of our pumping stations, that's behind the treatment facility, and make improvements to upsize some water mains to be able to deliver the extra capacity. All of those improvements, they are on the hook. The proponent of, or the owner in this case of AD Northwest Boulevard has to pay 100% of those improvements based on the rules, the public utilities rules that we follow. So that is out there right now, our correspondence. We have not heard anything since December from the owner of AD Northwest Boulevard. So we're here, our engineers have looked at it, and just like any customer that comes in, whether it's, you know, the, the developments down by the, down on Bridge Street before you cross over into Hudson, whether it's the Tannery site and all of that, they, they all come in and they seek the same thing. Do you have the capacity to serve? What kind of service can you give us? And we work with them, just like any other customer, and we're required to serve water in our areas, just like EverSource is required to provide electric power. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's, that's, that's who we are and where we are.
Thank you. Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. We are the sole shareholder. What would prevent us from directing you guys to not provide them water and to shut off their way of making money?
I, we would, we would be in violation, because of that reason alone, we would be in violation of public utilities law. We can't, we can't do that.
Alderman Moran?
Thank you. Which is, is that set by this board or the state?
It's by the state. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
I have a better answer.
Oh, great.
Thank you. Thank you.
We do not, the government of the City of Nashua does not have a majority of the seats on the Board of Directors. So the shareholders cannot by themselves, and in this case, the one shareholder cannot by itself, direct the officers and managers to do anything. The Board of Directors has to. There are only two seats on the Board of Directors that are directly controlled by any power of the City of Nashua. Otherwise, the city can only approve or disapprove directors nominated by the other directors. So it would take a long time to get to that point. And we could send all the letters we want, saying, turn off the water. They don't have to listen. And they would be against the law for them to listen.
So just, and thank you for that clarification, Attorney Bolton, because literally, what would happen is, is that our shareholders would have to say, hey, we want to sell the company. We'd have to come to the sole shareholder to, to do that. So, and that's not happening. You know, our, our board, it's, it's not even close. I mean, after what, after what we went through through 2006, '07, '08, '09, we're actually in a pretty darn good place here for everybody. Right? It's, you know, we're here to support, and we're here to run the water system for the, the residents in New Hampshire.
Alderman Moran?
Thank you. I just have one final follow-up. So it sounds like even as the majority shareholder, we can't direct Penachuk to do anything. And even if we could, it would be against state law. My only, maybe through you to Corporation Counsel, what's stopping the governor's office from issuing an executive order? Is that also against the law to, to prevent economic development at that location?
I think if the governor tried to do that, there'd be a lawsuit against the state and the Office of Governor. But she might prevail. I would not be representing her or the state.
We, we know that your plate is full.
General Formello would have his hands full, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. This company is currently not operating, correct? They're not open for business?
No, like, all I can say is, there's an active account. They do receive a water bill for some domestic use, and they receive, they have a, a fire service that goes into the bill, and that, that they're charged at the, the tariff rate.
Follow up, please.
Yes.
So currently, you mentioned, or it was mentioned, upwards of 2 million gallons a day. That's not the current draw, correct?
No, it isn't.
Just one more, please.
Yes.
Could you, I think you referred to it in your comments, about that much water usage engages the, the state at that point. And I think that there are some concerns that I've heard about some nefarious actions that could take place. Could you outline for us again how the state gets involved with a business that actively takes that much water?
I'm not aware, and I can, and I'm going to speak from experience here, we do have other larger customers, you know, Towne Hudson and Isaiah Bush up in Merrimack. And there is, at this point, there is no, at least DES involvement. Okay? There are agreements that have to be reached between those entities. There are agreements that have to be reached between those entities that are approved by the Public Utilities Commission. You mentioned nefarious acts. I, I don't, I can't even begin to, not sure what you, what you refer to. But there are regulations and conditions for service that any and every customer that has to meet, that have to provide, you know, that we provide water to, have to meet certain requirements of the utility. Obviously, a meter and, you know, what we call cross connection control devices and check valves and all these other things that we actively inspect and, and ensure that they're maintained. So, those, those are all in place. And I'm trying to remember, there was a little bit more of your question, I think, if, I'm hoping I answered all of them.
No, I think you covered it.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Alderman, Senate, I'll go down the line.
Thank you, Madam President. You'd, you'd said that the, the requested capacity that they had asked for when they initially met with you was in the market of 1 to 2 million, is that correct?
That's correct.
Just out of curiosity, just because I, I used to live down the road from it and the plant has done nothing but grow and grow since I've lived here, do you know ballpark what the draw that AB and Bev or Anheuser-Busch uses today?
I, I, I can't, well, because of certain public utilities law, I can't diverge, diverge that number by, by any of our customers. So, not even you or any of the, of the board. But I will say, the, there, there are, you know, public documents that, you know, that are agreements with Anheuser-Busch that have been approved by the PUC that provide lots of ranges. So, this is well within the range of what an Anheuser-Busch can do, what they do on a regular basis, we're not at liberty to say, just like we're not at liberty to say that any, any of you all here, how much water you use.
All right, fair enough. Thank you.
Alderman Thibault.
Thank you, Madam President. You were saying that they're on the hook for all the upgrades that need to be done, and we were talking before the meeting about whether they needed to do something to be able to handle this water in this building that they currently own. When you say they're on the hook, they have to pay for it, but they pay you and you guys find people to do it, right? They're not bringing in a company to do the upgrades, right?
We, we actually, what we do is, they will, they will be required to pay upfront 100% of the estimates upfront, and then when we get final numbers and bids, they'll be required to, to escrow that amount to us. And our engineers, whether we use external engineers or not, but most likely, it's, it's our internal staff will design everything, we will manage the construction, and we will do everything to our specifications. And so, that's.
Follow up.
Yes.
And you, you're not going to be able to answer this, I don't think, but I think with all the facts that we've heard so far tonight, I think the only open thing that, and we're going to probably hear it tonight, I know we're going to hear it tonight, is, and again, you can't answer it, is why did it get sold for so much more than it's worth? That's going to be the big, big question, the million dollar question, or maybe the, yeah, 67 million dollar question, right? And I think that, I wish the owner, the former owner was here, because I would love to ask him that question point blank, but he probably wouldn't answer that, and it probably, maybe he can't answer it. But I think that's going to be the big question. Everything else is, from what I see, is above board. So, and I thank you for coming tonight and being able to, to be here.
And you're right, I can't, I can't answer that.
Yeah, thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I think you mentioned it, and when I talked to you before, you mentioned that larger companies like this that are going to have a large capacity, the PUC negotiates a rate because PUC sets a rate, but they, they, or they, they set a rate, but that's based on a guaranteed usage, is that correct? So, in other words, they're going to, you said something, maybe 1 to 2 million, but they're going to pay for X amount whether they use it or not, is that correct? And they're going to use it, we know they're going to use it.
Yeah, I, and again, we haven't, we haven't gone to that point. Now, they could, they could.
Larger companies like Anheuser-Busch or something like that, or?
They may request it, but as of right now, that hasn't been a request that we've, we've seen nor entertained. The idea is, is that when you have a large user like that, it creates a really good base demand throughout the course of the year. And in there, think about it, is, is, is a large user, if it were to automatically, just suddenly close, all right? The operating costs have to be made up one way or the other. And a lot of times, the advantage of having these types of agreements is, number one, you're paying for a minimum whether you use it or not. Hence, we have an agreement with Amher, Merrimack Village District, okay? They did not, they did not use all of the water that was allocated to them last year, but they paid us 100% of what they were supposed to in the contract. We do see that, and the other benefit, sometimes, sometimes, when they do qualify in, for these, is that they've made improvements to our system that our ratepayers otherwise would have to make. So, that's a real plus, which, if we're looking at this, the, the project that we're contemplating and that they would have to do, is on our radar. It's not going to happen this year, not five years from now, and maybe not 10 years from now, but it will have to be done. And if it's done by someone else, that means our existing ratepayers don't have to pay for it in the future. The other thing that sometimes these larger agreements do, well, then, and they, they add kickout clauses, okay? So, they, you know, no matter what, if they said we're going to stop today, there's generally a 1 to 2 to 3 year period that they have to continue to pay on that contract so that we can all plan and be able to readjust for that draw. I think in history, I'm, I'm not a historian of Nashua here, but I know that there was some chemical facilities and there were some other manufacturing, that when they were in, when operation, when they left, our demands at Penitent went way down. Okay? So, we are, and, and some of the times, those types of things really help buffer that effect. But right now, there's been no discussion of, from anybody, we haven't had any discussions about the next steps forward at this point in time.
But most, most likely, if they were to be a large user, something like that would possibly or probably happen.
Yeah, they're, they're generally very keen to what's, what's going on, and, and they, yeah, we would, we would expect to hear some type of request like that, and, and then it would have to be entertained through the public process.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Maybe no direct question to you, but since Alderman, my colleague from WordAid brought it up, but I have some theories to why they, but I'm a little out there, guys. That's, that's the problem with me. I, I can for sure see, I, I, some comments online about how the person who sold the properties like a trader and all this other stuff, if anything, that is one of the most American things I've seen, to triple the price and walk away. The only difference between me and that person would, I would have turned them into a McCarthy commission and then got, got, got out of there with my money. But when I look at it, there's got to be some economic reason why they sold it for that, or to cause just this, chaos amongst ourselves and infighting and letting the Eric Cartmans of the world who are down their mom's basement rage tweeting about this thing cause division when we need to be uniting with each other and fighting back against this potential economic threat that we can't let it progress any further. We need to be having people enlist in trade schools, signing up for a job in Portsmouth at the, the Navy Yard, or becoming the engineers who create the best products in the world to actually compete instead of trying to sell some fiber supplement out of your mom's basement through rage tweeting and getting all those clicks, which, guess what? I bet there's poison in that supplement as well. But the, we need to figure out a way to stunt not this, this company, but other companies that are owned by our adversaries from making money off of us. And it can be frustrating because, for me to say this, because it sounds like I'm, like, all in on the whole, like, our water's being stolen thing. No, I'm all in on protecting the financial assets of our, our city, which is probably one of the largest contributors to state revenue in the entire state, and protecting, you know, the econ, the economy. And it's a longitudinal study. It's, it's a long, they're playing the long game, and this is the kind of stuff that lets them, them win in the long game. We have to find ways, and I'll be making a motion, hopefully, once discussion is done about finding ways to stop them from using the Nashua economy to progress themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Voeber, for being here this evening. Appreciate your importance and your question and answer period.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that requests that the President of the Board send a letter to the Governor of the State of New Hampshire and request that she do everything in her power to bring more light to the situation of the sale of this property, what the use is for, and how we can prevent it from becoming operational.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Discussion?
Can I speak to it?
Alderman Moran.
My, the whole point here is that we're powerless to do anything, and I think it is upon us as the governing body to request formally, the governor, look into what is happening here. I know the EPA chief was just here the other day, and I don't think he swung by City Hall to bring, talk about this subject at all. I, I think we need to have something on the record that says to these people that are here, that we're not just going to let it stop here after discussion with the CEO of the Penitent, that we've asked, formally asking the Governor of the State of New Hampshire, who has more power than us, to look into it and if there's anything that can be done about it. And we should be making that letter public and her response.
Alderman Cle.
Why would we stop, start there? Why wouldn't we do the Daniel Webster College? And the truth is, this is, this, there's a US subsidiary to this company as well. I mean.
I can amend it to any, any foreign.
I guess I don't understand. Right now, there is already legislation that stops any foreign company from being, coming in and purchasing land and so on, and I, and I don't disagree with, with, with that. But to, to stop this company who's already come in, who was encouraged by the State of New Hampshire from doing this, for us to turn around and say, sorry, you just spent $67 million and we're going to stop you, and I, I guess I don't, I don't, I don't think it's, it's right. While, yes, I understand exactly what the points you're trying to make, and I see what you're trying to, to do, I just have a little bit of, of an issue with it. And again, again, why not do it with Daniel Webster College, too? That's a huge chunk of land that's just sitting there and no one's doing anything with it. So, let's move it to that, too, you know?
Alderman Moran.
We can amend it to say any foreign national-owned company that operates in the City of Nashua. But, but what would it hurt to ask? Does it hurt to ask the governor to look into it formally? We have constituents here, we control water supply for the surrounding towns, they may not be our constituents, but why can't the governing body, who has no power to do anything, just ask? So, these people's concerns can be further addressed at the right level of government.
Okay, I have Alderman Clemens next.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Alderman Moran, I, I agree with you, I think the right response is a state-level response. And I think this board requesting some sort of response from the state is the appropriate thing to do. But what I would, what I would prefer is that we listen to the folks here tonight and hear what their concerns are. Then, we can get together, perhaps, maybe at the personnel meeting, perhaps at another meeting of planning and economic development, maybe, and have a discussion about what such a letter should contain, considering the facts of, of what the facts are, but then also taking into account the public's concern here tonight. So, I think, I agree with you, I think you're on the right track, but I would like to first listen to the public and then later on craft something to send up to Concord.
I have a lot of people that want to speak.
I was going to plan to withdraw my motion.
You're going to withdraw your motion?
Yes, after one brief statement.
Alderman Moran.
I concur, my colleague at large, with the simple piece of, yes, let's hear from the remainder of the folks that are here, because there may be some things I'm missing. And further having committee meetings, we can, I can introduce it as legislation, and we can have it at a committee hearing and have more people come back and talk about it. So, I'll withdraw my motion.
Motion is withdrawn. Mayor?
You know, well, just quickly, if and when we're writing to Concord, one thing we could really use help with is purchasing Daniel Webster College. So, here's something that's been owned by, by a Chinese citizen for, out of a bankruptcy auction, federal bankruptcy auction for a long time. We'd like to see something constructive, medium-density housing is what the master plan says, or something else, a public park or something. But the price is probably $20 million. But if the state really wanted to help us, they could give us, help us buy that property so that we could do something productive with it and get it out of Chinese hands.
Yes, here, here.
Alderman Sullivan.
I don't really know where we are in the agenda right now, but I would, I would like to ask a question of the mayor.
Absolutely.
And just get this on the record. Could we take that by eminent domain?
Well, the legal department, Attorney Bolton can answer this in more detail, but there are legal constraints on for what purpose you take a property for, by eminent domain. And you have to pay fair market value to begin with, but you cannot pay, you cannot take a by eminent domain for a private purpose. So, if our purpose was to turn it over to a housing developer, that would not be allowed. If our purpose was to build a new park, a recreation area, you know, a public, an actual public purpose, we could take it, but we would have to pay them, you know, at the value, there'd probably be litigation over what that value is, but in the end, we could take it for a public purpose.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of June 10th, June 23rd, June 24th, July 8th, July 22nd, and July 28th, be accepted, placed on file, and reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from the Office of Economic Development regarding public art design contract on the Nashua Riverwalk. Communication has been received from Lisa Amphoto, Director of Public Works, regarding referrals from the Board of Aldermen Resolutions. Communication has been received from Sam Durfee, AICP Planning Manager, regarding referral from the Board of Aldermen on ordinance O-25-055, amending the land use code by adding provisions regarding specific uses in the general industrial zone, or overlain by the Transit Oriented Development Overlay District. Communication has been received from Nancy Trask, Human Resources Manager, Ian Lizzie Goveya, Senior Human Resources Specialist, regarding proposed ordinance O-25-058 recommendation. And communication has been received from John L. Griffin, Chief Financial Officer, regarding proposed ordinance O-25-058 recommendation.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have some people that have signed up for the wrong public comment period, so I will not call your name. The first person we have is Alyssa Omara.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Can we get your name and address for the record, please?
Yep, Alyssa Omara, Tubus Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. My name is Alyssa, and I'm the Executive Director of Great American Downtown, a nonprofit dedicated to supporting economic and cultural vibrancy in our city's downtown core. I use that word "core" intentionally. GAD has been a part of Nashua's story for decades, and even when we were originally incorporated in 1986, our mission was to promote the growth, prosperity, and public welfare of the City of Nashua by planning and providing for the traditional central core of the city known as downtown Nashua. That is a direct quote. I'm here tonight because I understand that the city is weighing whether to reduce or pause investment in projects like public art, community events, and other quality-of-life initiatives due to economic concerns, specifically the public art project on the boardwalk. I want to urge you to consider the opposite approach, because evidence shows that during challenging economic times, investing in a community's cultural and social capital is not a luxury, it is a necessity. National studies, including work from the National Endowment for the Arts and Americans for the Arts, show that public art and cultural events generate significant economic returns for local businesses. They bring people into our city, encourage spending at restaurants, shops, and services, and create a sense of place that makes Nashua more competitive for attracting both visitors and residents. In fact, communities that maintain or grow their investment in these areas during economic downturns tend to recover faster because they remain vibrant and active, drawing in people from surrounding communities when other areas go quiet. From September to December alone, Great American Downtown has an event planned almost every other week, each designed with one main intention, to bring foot traffic to our downtown businesses. We're not just talking about big festivals. Nearly all of our fall and winter events incorporate some aspect of the arts, live music, public art installations, artisan markets, because the arts create connection, joy, and a reason to visit. But we can't do this alone. Many of our most successful events rely on partnership with the city, both in terms of resources and vision. We need a municipal partner who sees the value of building community even when times are uncertain, especially when times are uncertain. are uncertain, especially when times are uncertain. GAD's goal is simple: a downtown that is vibrant, viable, and a reflection of Nashua's unique character. When our downtown is thriving, it signals the entire, to the entire region, that our city is thriving. When downtown is quiet, it sends the opposite message. Every event, every mural, every gathering is an opportunity to tell the world that Nashua is open, active, and moving forward. I urge you to think of public art, cultural programming, and the downtown events not as extras, but as core investments in our economic resilience. The businesses that line our streets depend on steady foot traffic, and the residents of Nashua depend on a sense of place and connection. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to making Nashua a city where people want to live, work, and visit, no matter what the economic climate.
The next person I have signed up for this comment period is Bill Ferrio.
My name is Bill Ferrio. My home is number 35 Indian Rock Road. I wanted to talk about the tax cap thing, which I understand is likely gonna be killed tonight. So that's unfortunate, because I believe there's a lot of flaws in the present budget proceeding, budget process. If you remember, at the public hearing for the budget, one of the first things that the mayor said when he presented his budget was that people are struggling, and taxes are very high. He said that. I didn't say that. You said that, Mayor. And he said, "People are struggling, and taxes are high." Mrs. Johnson didn't say that. You said that. But, and that's okay. It's okay to make that statement. It's okay to admit that there's a problem, but you didn't have any solutions for it. You didn't come up with any answers to that. You didn't have any ideas, no opportunities. And you had a staff. You have a staff that works with you, experts at managing city government. And they didn't have any solutions either, to help the people that are struggling, to solve this problem. And then the 15 Aldermen, 15 people in one room, one room together, couldn't come up with any solutions to help the people that are struggling. That's a problem. And I believe it's because the people don't have the correct background, experience, in developing budgets and managing budgets. So, a recommendation I would make, Mayor, is to hire a professional budget manager for your staff, somebody that could do a deep dive into each one of those line items in the budget. And I heard some of the Aldermen talking about how they did a line-by-line review. That's not possible, because even I, who have totally, a different type of background, was able to find opportunities and risks in the budget that you developed. A professional budget manager would definitely be able to find some opportunities and risks, and help the people that are struggling. The other recommendation I would make is regarding the whole tax cap, spending cap thing. The cap should not be based on previous year's budget inflated by some factor. It should be based on the previous year's actuals, times an inflation factor. Because the city has a habit of developing these large surpluses each year, and then spending on another thing. Surplus is not a good thing. Surplus is not something to be proud of. Surplus means it didn't do a very good job of budgeting. You do a lot of the same stuff a year after year. You should be able to budget more accurately than you do. And if you hire a professional budget manager, he'll be able to help you with that. But that's, the key point of that is, based on previous year's actuals, not budget. Thank you.
The next person I have signed up for this public comment period is Fred Thibault.
I'm sorry, I'm pretty deaf.
Fred Thibault.
I'm Vernon Hickey.
No, Fred Thibault.
I, I'm sorry.
My name is Fred Thibault, 24 Cheyenne Drive. I'd just like to say, well, I've heard here. What I'd be upset about is, why would a Chinese company pay over $60 million, what is assessed at under fif, assessed at under $15 million? Somebody's playing football without a helmet. Now, I'd like to talk about R-25-121. It's up for indefinite postponement. That's a good thing. If you look at the analysis that CFO Griffin presented, you see how complicated a tax cap calculation is. You have to balance the revenues against appropriations. In the revenues, you get the local taxes, grants, fees. In appropriations, you have county taxes, general fund, expandable, these special revenue funds, enterprise funds. Complicated, a very complicated balance. If you don't balance it, you can only raise so many taxes, otherwise the taxes are gonna go explode. And the tax cap has to be held to a state law passed in 2011. On the other hand, the spending cap is way outside the 2011 law. It passed many years before then, and it got rejuvenated by state legislature. The spending cap only compares the current budget appropriations with the next budget appropriations. It's very simple. It's only Donches, Bolton, and Griffin that make things complicated. As an example, the 26, 2026 set the budget's $33 million under the cap. When Griffin came up with his next calculation, that he presented to you when you talked about the tax cap, hey, we're only $7.7 million under the cap. And then we come up with a tax cap, it's $11.8 million, $11.8 million above the cap. Crazy. If you did the spending cap the way it should be done, 2060, 2026 budget, it's half a million dollars above the cap. Very simple, very easy.
30 seconds.
Mayor Donches keeps saying, "It's in the charter." Well, Mayor Donches, you're correct. We're gonna see you in court, and we're gonna talk about what's in the charter. We don't have to deal with the ordinances, simply the charter. Let's go back to a simple cap calculation, like it did for many, many years, until Donches took office. Thank you.
So, we had Ken Siegel and Avalon signed up in the wrong public comment period. If you'd like to be added to the back of the list for the second common period, I'm happy to do so. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award pole pads.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. A motion to accept, place on file, and approve the purchase of 28 no-inc. pole pads used to check in voters on Election Day from LHS Associates in the amount of $65,000. Funding will be through Department 107 City Clerk Fund, General Fund, 71 Equipment by Roll Call, please.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Thibault.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
13 yays, 0 nays.
That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award copier lease and maintenance agreement.
Alderman Goveya.
Thank you, Madam President. With the most controversial motion tonight, I'm gonna move to accept, place on file, and approve a five-year copier and lease and maintenance agreement with Toshiba for a new multi-function copy machine to be used at the library, in the amount not to exceed $5,460.91 a month. Funding will be through Department 179 Library, Fund, General Fund, 54 Property Services by Roll Call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Thibault.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
13 yays, 0 nays.
That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding tax increment finance development program change order number three for riverfront parks construction.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and approve change order number three with Moore's Landscaping for reconstruction on two sections of the existing path along the northerly bank of the river to tie into the boardwalks under construction at the Park de la Renaissance and Bicentennial Park, in the amount not to exceed $369,312. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development, Fund Riverfront, TIF, Fund 81 Capital Outlay Improvements by Roll Call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Thibault.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
13 yays, 0 nays.
That motion carries. Petitions.
Petition for street discontinuance, Major Drive. Petition for street discontinuance, Spalding Street.
There being no objection, I'll accept the petitions for street discontinuance, refer them to the Committee on Infrastructure and the Nashua City Planning Board, and schedule a public hearing for Wednesday, September 24th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Appointments by the mayor. Greeley Park Advisory Committee, Kerry Miller, new appointment, term to expire August 12th, 2028, 35 Concord Street, Apartment 2, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. Nashua Revolving Loan Fund Committee, Christine Malloy, new appointment, term to expire September 9th, 2028, 9 Pinehurst Avenue, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments as read, and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 5th, 2025 Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the June 11th, 2025 Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the June 16th, 2026, and July 21st, 2025, I think that was June 16th, 2025, and July 21st, 2025, be accept, of the Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the reports of the June 18th, 2025, July 8th, 2025, and July 16th, 2025, Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the reports of the June 23rd and July 28th, Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the June 25th and July 9th Joint Meeting Committee on Infrastructure and Police Commission be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 26th Joint Meeting of the Committee on Infrastructure and the Board of Public Works be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of the mayor's appointments.
Keefe Auditorium Commission.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following new appointment of Joe Olafarowitz, 35 Newbury Street, Nashua, to the Keefe Auditorium Commission. Mr. Olafarowitz, come forward, please, for the oath of office. The, come right up to the attorney, and he will swear you in. And thank you for your willingness to serve.
May I use your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Keefe Auditorium Commission, according to the best of your abilities, and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God? So, what I do. Thank you.
Mine Falls Park Advisory Commission.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following new appointments to the Mine Falls Park Advisory Commission: Walter Davis, Q1 Snow Circle, Nashua, and Kimberly Griglick, 7 Denver Drive, Nashua, both with terms to expire July 22nd, 2028. Are either of those individuals here this evening? They will be sworn in at a later date.
Down, Downtown Improvement Committee.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the following reappointment of Philip Sconces, 14 Ashland Street, Nashua, to the Downtown Improvement Committee, with a term to expire December 1st, 2027. I don't see Mr. Sconces here in the audience. He will be sworn in at a later date.
Greater Nashua Revolving Loan Fund Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following new appointment of David Dearborn, 7, 1718 Belmont Street, Manchester, to the Greater Nashua Revolving Loan Fund Committee with a term to expire July 22nd, 2028. Is Mr. Dearborn here? He will be sworn in at a later date.
Conservation Commission.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the following new appointment of Amanda Griffith, 111 Blue Stone Drive, Nashua, to the Conservation Commission, with a term to expire July 22nd, 2028. Is Ms. Griffith here? She is. Okay. We'll give her a second to come up the stairs so she can get sworn in. She must be in the overflow room. Yeah, please. Okay, she will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Third reading of R-25-121 amended, proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to establishing a limitation on the annual budgets.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for indefinite postponement of R-25-121 by Roll Call.
Motion is for indefinite postponement. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Goveya?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not gonna support the indefinite postponement motion. I feel we've made some good headwaves on it. I feel we need to keep the conversation going. Is it perfect? No, but I feel by killing the legislation tonight, we stop the conversation. I'd like to see it keep going, so I will not be supporting the motion at hand. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. I'm gonna join my colleague from Ward 1, not gonna support this. I've been on the Budget Committee four years, and every, every year I hear that the spending cap is no good, it needs to go, we, we've gotta get rid of it, it just, it's hamstringing the city. We had an opportunity here. Perfect? No. But to keep the conversation going, to change how we do our city budgets. For some reason, we were on a good track, and then it sat on the shelf for two months. We tried to pick it up, and now here we are. I'm not gonna support this. I think that there is, you know, if, if there is a better way to do the city budget, I'm all ears. I'd love to hear it, but I certainly don't wanna stop talking about it. Thanks.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I agree with my colleagues that the conversation should continue. I just feel that, no matter what we do, it's not gonna make it onto the ballot this fall. And I think that it would make more sense for the next group of Aldermen who get elected to work on it, and that's the reason why I'm, I am making the motion to indefinitely postpone. But I, I, you know, I'll be on this board for another two years, and I'm, I'm willing to, to work with whoever's on the new board.
Alderman Thibault.
Thank you, Madam President. So, first of all, I just wanna say that when you do a budget for a city, a surplus is a good thing, because the opposite is a deficit. So we don't wanna be in a deficit. So, if you can manage to down to the exact penny, then great, but that, that's, the best budgeting, people can't do that, because things come up. So we always wanna make sure we're conservative with our budget, so we do run a surplus. If you run a deficit, it's bad. As far as the tax cap, Alderman Sullivan is exactly right. Spending cap is terrible. You might wanna tell Alderman, former Alderman Thibault that. It's bad. We need to fix it. But, we don't have enough time to get it on the ballot, because it has to go up to the state and all that stuff. So, because of that, I pushed for tabling it before, and I ordered indefinite postponement, and we still passed it on to committee. They came back and recommended that we indefinitely postpone it. I'm for that. I think it's the right thing. I think we'll have a new board, whatever the board, it's gonna change, because... going to change, because some people aren't running. So, and then it could change, because some of us could all be, we could all be out of a job. So, it's going to change. So, I think we need to not dump it on them. It needs work. It wasn't ready to go to the ballot. We want to make sure that we're 100% sure that it's the right thing to do before we throw this thing on the ballot, because, I mean, it could go through, and it could not be the right thing, and then it doesn't work. So, we really, I think it's better off postponed and brought up in the next section in the beginning of next year.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I was a proponent of the tax cap until we got all the information from our finance people. And then after listening to what they had to say based on the regulation up in the State House and so on, and what was put forward, it's just not feasible to go with a tax cap. And I think the better form would be to look at the spending cap and perhaps to tweak that. I think that is the conversation that we should be having. I agree with my colleagues that we need to keep the conversation moving. I think we need to continue having going forward, because I do think that there are some issues with how we do our budget. I do think that there are better ways of doing it, and I think it's a conversation needs to be happening. Whether I'm on the board next time or so on, I don't think that this is a conversation that we should be having now, because the next board, which is going to be different, we know that there's a couple of people that are on this board that definitely will not be here. So, I think it's a conversation that the next board needs to have. Yes, we've already started the conversation. I think that they can continue it. I hope that I'm on the board. I hope that I can add to that conversation. But I personally think the conversation should be around updating the spending cap and having the, talking to the voters about how we can tweak that, how we can maybe have an override on that, maybe how we can put that into it, actually create that into, how we can make sure that the grants are eliminated into it and not part of the spending as we have to do it now. So, however that gets worked out, however that conversation is had, I think it should happen with the next board. So, I am in support of this indefinite postponement, but I also agree with what my colleagues had to say. I think the conversation needs to happen. I just think it needs to happen with the next board. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
I think everybody's come to the conclusion that we won't get this done by the end of this session. So, I'm not sure if all the aldermen know that at the end of the session, going into the next election, all legislation that hasn't passed goes away. So, new legislation will have to be written. So, this is aimed at getting it on the ballot as a referendum, and I think it's more prudent if we take it off. We can still work on it, and we should, because I don't think you want to start after the next election and say, oop, ground zero, start again. I think we can give a lot of information to whoever's going to be making the final decision. So, there's no, by doing the indefinite postponement on this does not stop us from working on that legislation and getting it primed for the next board.
No further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
No.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
No.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Nine yays, four nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25121 is declared indefinitely postponed.
Second reading of R-25-182, authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended federal aid program project agreement with the state of New Hampshire for an expanded Walnut Street Oval Intersection Project, and to accept and appropriate an additional $1,174,476.74 for the project.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25182 by roll call pursuant to Charter 49. I'd like to talk to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
This passed the Budget Committee, and it's, we've had a lot of discussions about this, that everybody, I think, in here believes that the oval needs to be fixed, and this gets us on the way to do that, so I ask for your approval.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, one nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25182 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-183, authorizing the mayor to enter into a federal aid program project agreement with the state of New Hampshire for the purpose of designing a new pedestrian bridge over the Nashua River and to accept and appropriate $500,000 for the project.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25183 by roll call. Can I speak very briefly to this?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes. Let's remember, as great as ancient Rome was, they had to get out of the city so they built a bridge. So, this is a good thing for our citizens. Thank you.
Motion is for final passage. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, one nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25183 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-184, relative to the supplemental appropriation of $25,618 of fiscal year 2025, unanticipated driver's education revenue into special revenue fund number 2201, Driver's Education Fund.
Alderman Tebow.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25-184 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25184 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-185, relative to the transfer of $35,000 from Department 194 Contingency Account 70100, General Contingency, to Department 109 Civic and Community Activities, Account and Classification 56, Outside Agencies for the Purpose of Providing Funding to Nashua Association for the Elderly.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25185 by roll call. I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
This unanimously passed Budget. This was inadvertently left out of our budget this year. For the past several years, we've been giving them this money so they can maintain the small infrastructure problems within the building that, by the way, the city owns, the elderly center, and it allows them to do touch-up painting, fixing roads, and other minor things. So, it's critical for their budget, and at the budget meeting, former Treasurer Fredette was here, as well as a former Alderman Karen, to speak to this, and I ask for final passage.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25185 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-186, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Home Investment Program American Rescue Plan Act Fund Allocation Plan.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend R-25186 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of recommended amendments made at the Human Affairs Committee by roll call. I'd like to speak to it briefly if I could.
Alderman Senate.
These amendments that were made to the American Rescue Plan Act allocations contemplate a change in the reward that we received from HUD as of May of 2025. The amendments also cover some minor housekeeping to ensure that the legislation matches the table allocating that award to the various projects it'll be used for.
Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, one nay.
That motion carries. Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25186 as amended by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, one nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25186 is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of R-25-187, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $500,000 for the landfill gas expansion project, the solid waste department Four Hills landfill.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move for final passage of R-25187 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Alderman Thibodeau.
I will not be supporting this because of the value of it. I don't believe we should be bonding a $500,000 project. So, although I do think that what it's for is a good thing, I just won't be voting for it because of the bonding.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, one nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25187 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-188, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to borrow an amount not to exceed $6,192,000 through the issuance of bonds and/or a loan through the New Hampshire Department Environmental Services State Revolving Loan Fund for the wastewater treatment plant Phase One upgrades project.
Alderman Sullivan.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25188 by roll call, please.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25188 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-189, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $3,280,000 for various wastewater capital improvements.
Alderman Dow.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25189 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25189 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-190, relative to the acceptance of $39,036 from the United States Department of Justice into police grant activity, 2024 Justice Assistance Grant, multi-jurisdictional.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Move for final passage of R-25-190 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Gueva.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clements.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
And that motion carries. Resolution twenty-five-one-ninety is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of our dash twenty-five dash one ninety-one relative to the acceptance of up to $350,000 from the New Hampshire Department of Safety Homeland Security Grant Program into police grant activity fiscal year 26 Homeland Security Grants.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R. twenty-five-one-eighty-five by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Madam President, just for the record, it should be final passage of R. twenty-five dash one ninety-one. It's incorrect on the outline.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Gueva.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clements.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
That motion carries and Resolution twenty-five-one-ninety-one is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of our dash twenty-five dash one ninety-two authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $4,025,000 for the city sewer infrastructure improvement and drain casting replacement programs.
Alderman Tebow.
I move for final passage of our dash twenty-five dash one ninety-two by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Gueva.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clements.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution twenty-five-one-ninety-two is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O. dash twenty-five dash zero-five-five amending the land use code by adding provisions regarding specific uses in the general industrial zone where overlaid by the transit-oriented development.
Alderman Gueva.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of O. dash twenty-five dash zero-five-five by roll call. I speak to that motion briefly.
Alderman Gueva.
Thank you, Madam President. This was passed by the Planning and Economic Development Committee unanimously. I would ask any questions. Go over to Alderman Senate. He wrote the legislation. It sounded pretty good to me. I have no issue with it. Thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd also like to note that this received unanimous approval by the city's planning board at their last meeting. Ultimately, what this is going to do is it's going to contemplate the GI zones when they're overlaid by a transit-oriented development so that any future developments while still allowing for existing uses will be able to go forward, but any future development will be contemplated with a greater consideration of how those neighborhoods exist today.
Thank you. Motion is for final passage. Any further discussion?
Alderman Willshire.
Alderman Sullivan, then Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. You might have said this, Alderman Senate, but one question I had when I rewatched the meeting was how this affects any pending or current projects? Does it? Or did you speak to that in your remarks, that this has no effect on that?
To the best of my knowledge, there are none that are contemplated right now. I could be wrong. I would prefer to direct that question to Director Sullivan if he's willing to answer.
Oh, perfect. I didn't notice him on Zoom. If I could ask you to, Director Sullivan. Thank you.
Certainly. Director Sullivan?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the question. To my knowledge, there are no proposals that would immediately be impacted by the proposed legislation. Alderman Senate was absolutely correct in his response.
Thank you. Alderwoman Kelly.
If I could, Madam President, through you to Director Sullivan, I also have a question. I know that we will be, we just got new code updates, and there'll be recode workshops coming up in the next month, and I just wanted to make sure that this legislation doesn't fly in the face of anything that's coming through with the recode.
Director Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam President. Alderwoman Kelly's question, there will be modifications to the zoning that will result in some tweaks to the structure that's being proposed here. But a few things I would point out, given the opportunity. Number one, we're not clear exactly when the revised land use code will go into place. We certainly have some ambitions as a planning department and a community development division, and so this legislation will remain in place until a more comprehensive land use code is adopted fully by the Board of Aldermen. In our eyes, that could be a period as short as three months. It could be six months. It could be longer. And so this legislation will certainly protect against misalignments between proposed uses in the surrounding neighborhoods, as Alderman Senate, until that happens. That said, we will be working closely with each of the members of the board, including Alderman Senate, to ensure that specific changes in legislation that were made over recent years, including this modification before you this evening, will be woven into the proposed code. And so in some form or another, the very protections that are being put in place here will certainly be carried forward into the new code, albeit perhaps not in the exact form that's being presented before you this evening. What you see before you this evening is intended to fit into the current structure of the code, and that will be changing over the coming months. So I hate to give you a little bit of a non-answer, Alderwoman Kelly, but yes, this principle will persist, albeit perhaps in a different form in the new code.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing no one? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Gueva.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clements.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries and ordinance twenty-five-fifty-five is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O. dash twenty-five dash zero-five-eight amending the unaffiliated employees' personnel policies with respect to the fire department's chief officers' compensation and benefits.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move for final passage of O. twenty-five-zero-fifty-eight by roll call, and I can speak to it briefly.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. What I honor is to be a prime sponsor on this with my colleague at large to my left, Alderman O'Brien, to bring the compensation up to something that's on par. As I talk about quite frequently, we live in a city that makes it very difficult for working-class folks and especially our first responders to actually live here. And this is one step closer to making sure that they can continue to afford to live in the city that they serve. And just as I can point out to my colleague down the desk here, even after retiring as a deputy chief, he still gave back to the community by being here on this board. So we need to remember that, you know, times change, things get expensive, and the folks that are willing to run into burning buildings to save our children's lives deserve every penny that we can afford.
Alderman Gueva.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll have to abstain from this vote. The members whose salaries will be going up are dues-paying members to the lobby I represent.
Further discussion? Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. Proud to put a yes vote behind this. This, to me, is all about retaining leadership for our frontline women and men that work for Nashville Fire and Rescue. And it also goes to succession planning. I think that in order to run a successful organization, one that's needed, especially for that crucial department, you need great leaders. And I think this ordinance keeps great leaders in the city and helps grow our fire department. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I'm 100% for this. This is, I believe, for the seven chiefs that have been kind of overlooked over the last a lot of years at this point. I'm 100% for it. I'm going to vote yes. The only concern I have is there will be some domino effect in the city of people that believe they should also have raises as well. And I'm not saying they shouldn't, but there's only so much money going around. I mean, I'd love to pay everybody what they earn, they deserve. And I believe the fire chiefs have deserved at this point to get this bump, so I'm 100% for it.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Gueva.
Abstain.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clements.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, zero nays, one abstention.
That motion carries and ordinance twenty-five-fifty-eight is declared duly adopted. Business unfinished at previous meeting.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Dontrus regarding tax increment finance development program, Riverwalk Public Art Design Services.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I, excuse me, I move to accept, place on file, and approve a professional services contract for a newly proposed public art feature along the wall of 59 Main Street to Park McDowell in the amount of $10,000. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund, Riverfront Tiff Fund, 70500 Project Contingency by roll call. Madam President, this, there was controversy in the, when we talked about this in the past, that people were a little concerned about this, that we were painting on a wall that belonged to a business and so on. And that is not the case. This is something that, it's to protect the wall because of the way the Riverwalk is going to be. And I think Director Hanam is here, if anybody has any questions on it. I think it's something that we should be doing. It's going to protect the property that exists. It's going to be independent art piece, I believe. And I think it's something that we should, the, we did have a speaker that kind of spoke to this. I think it's something we should support. And I hope that my fellow Alderman will support this soon. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
No.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Gueva.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clements.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, two nays.
That motion carries. Okay, that motion carries. New business resolutions.
First reading of our dash twenty-five dash one ninety-four relative to a ballot referendum concerning social districts within the city of Nashville.
Alderman Clements.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to place a referendum question on the upcoming municipal election ballot concerning social districts within the city of Nashville by roll call, and I'd like to speak to that.
Alderman Clements.
So this is, the state, I'm going to just preface this. The state of New Hampshire recently passed legislation to allow for social districts, which meaning basically open containers, in certain areas that a city may want to do that. So think like Main Street. It had, the question of whether or not the city can entertain doing that has to be presented to the voters in a regular election. And so if we, if the voters say yes, then the city would then craft a policy around that. So sort of a backwards two-step process. So I am proposing, I mean, I am very comfortable with the legislation. I realize that some folks may not be. My motion here is to put it on the ballots and then schedule a public hearing. However, there is a second alternative to this, although I'm sure the city clerk would sweat it. The alternative is to let this go to personnel, have it discussed there, but then we would have to have a special Board of Aldermen meeting on Thursday the 4th, because we have to get this out onto the ballot by the 5th. So I'm up for either one. I have nothing going on on Thursday the 4th that I know of. But, you know, given the expediency and the fact that this has to go on a regular municipal election and not a special election, I think it would behoove us to do one of the two options at least. But right now, I am proposing that we vote to put it on the ballot this evening.
I neglected to ask for additional sponsors. Is there anyone else who wants to co-sponsor this? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gueva, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Cle. Okay. I have Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I think this is a great idea, and Alderman Clements beat me slightly to the punch by reaching out to Corporate Action Council probably 10 seconds before I did, but I was glad to co-sponsor with him on this. I think it's very important to the economic development of the downtown in particular, especially when it comes to events like the Winter Stroll, allowing vendors having the ability to sell alcohol in that area, in Main Street, or whatever else that we may decide is appropriate use of the open container type rule. And I actually, of all people, I was at an event with Representative Osborne. We disagree from time to time on things, especially when it comes to the free market. But I was, I told him he had it right on this one, and he was bragging about it. And I said, I think this is something Nashville should do. And here we are, and I hope we can do it. I think it will be a boom for the downtown in particular and wherever else we can set up these districts. And we would be the first in the entire state to do so. Again, another way Nashville is the economic engine of the state.
Alderman Gueva.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm fine with the language at hand. I reviewed it. It seems simple enough, and just because, even if it went on, or it goes on the ballot and it passes, it doesn't mean it happens. So there's still a lot of debate that could happen inside the chamber as far as parameters. I think it's great. We're being proactive in this situation, and we're getting the ballot part done first. We get it done in November, then we can really start looking into. I think this is a, it could potentially be a very good driver for economic development and just another tool in the tool belt for the city of Nashville. I will support this. Thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to the makers of the legislation, I just had a question regarding whether or not this was a binding referendum. If I understand the way you described the RSA, we can't craft these districts until we get the say-so from the electorate. I just want to make sure I understand that. So if I'm interpreting it right, and I'm interpreting it that way, it would be a binding referendum. If they say no, we can't move forward.
Alderman Clements, you have a response?
Yeah, I, yes, I do. Yeah, Alderman Senate's correct. If the voters vote no, there is no moving forward. If the voters vote yes, that still might not mean it goes forward, but then it puts it into the power of this board here to craft an ordinance surrounding it.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. When I first heard about this, my knee-jerk reaction was to say no. I didn't like the idea of open containers and just, my idea was that people were just going to be walking around Main Street with open containers until I had a conversation with my colleague, and we talked about that this had to be approved so that we could then craft areas, and that perhaps the area could be something like the Stroll. So to my colleague from Ward 1, who said, we have to put our foot forward of, you know, getting this approved by the voters so that we could then craft the areas, is exactly what Alderman Clements had explained to me and so on. So I am for this. And as a person who doesn't drink and as a person who doesn't like seeing people walking around with alcohol, I understand that this is an economic boon, and it would help to be able to have these small little beer garden kind of things where someone does sell alcohol and they can go like this. And we could, perhaps, you know, the downtown committee could sell the mugs that could be used and so on. There's all kinds of ideas that could come from this. So I see it as a potential economic driver within the city. So thank you. So, I see it as a, as a potential economic driver within the city. So, thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah. Torn on this right now. I'm opposed to open containers downtown, but to, through you to the maker of the motion, has this been vetted by the police department, and what's their opinion?
Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, I, no, I have not asked them. Again, this has to be, the voters have to say yes in order for anything to move forward, right? So, there is, I do have a, if this passes, I do have a subsequent motion to schedule a public hearing on it, which would be on October 14th. And I imagine at that time, we could invite all sorts of people to that public hearing to get all kinds of opinions. I'm sure the voters would want to have that information too before the election. So, really, I think the best, the best thing to do is to move forward with, at least putting this on the ballot and letting folks decide. And they can hear from folks like the police. They can hear from other community members and things like that and make a decision on Election Day.
Y'all set? Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I think it's an interesting proposition. I know that this is a fairly new thing that came down from the state. If you had told me eight years ago, I'd be a stickler for process, I would have laughed at you. But, I do, I do feel a bit uncomfortable moving forward without having it in committee and having some of those discussions, as well as voting it to put it on the ballot right now, and then we have a public hearing after. What's our recourse if everybody says we don't want this?
Anything further? Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Gueva.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
No.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
10 yays, 3 nays.
That motion carries. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to, that the Board of Alderman hold a special Board of Alderman meeting prior to the regular Board of Alderman meeting on Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber, relative on the question pursuant to RSA 17834-1B by roll call.
That's a good enough motion.
Okay.
It's got to specify the purpose of the meeting is for a public hearing on the ballot question.
Okay.
Alderman Clemmons.
So, and, and the purpose of the meeting is for the ballot question relative to a ballot referendum concerning social districts within the city of Nashua.
You have to say public hearing.
Yes, a public hearing.
Okay. Discussion. Seeing none? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Gueva.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
13 yays, 0 nays.
That motion carries.
First reading of R-25-195, authorizing deed waivers for certain properties.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of R-25-196, relative to the transfer of 15,000 from Department 162 Street Lighting Account 54100 Electricity to Department 159 Hydrants Fire Protection Account 54835 Hydrant Fees.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of O-25-061, authorizing a stop sign on Weld Street at its intersection with Old Field Road.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of O-25-062, increasing the tax credit for a service-connected total disability.
Additional sponsors. Alderman, Alderman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of O-25-063, amending the unaffiliated employees' personnel policies with respect to unaffiliated employee salary and wage schedule.
Additional sponsors. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of O-25-064, amendments to permitted parking areas.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. And we finally reached it. Period for public comment. Okay, so, just to remind you, you have three minutes. You need to give your name and address for the record, and the timer will let you know when your three minutes is up. Vernon Hickey.
Allow me, please, to introduce myself. My first name is Vernon, and my last name is Hickey. I'm 89 years old. I'm a veteran of the United States Army. I've been a citizen of the state of New Hampshire for 55 years. And I grew up in an area, an era, where patriotism
Sir, could, did you give your address?
Was characteristic of everyone. It's not so today. I want you to know that I love the Chinese people, but the Chinese government, they're not our friends. And the Chinese government is playing a long-term game. And common sense tells me three things, that this project is part of that Chinese long-term game. And there's something wrong with this project. That's number two. And number three, this project belongs in the dustbin. Put it there. Thank you.
Sir.
Mr. Hickey. Mr. Hickey. Can you?
My address is 35 Pine Hill Road, Hollis, New Hampshire.
Thank you, sir. Laura Tollersky.
Good evening. My name's Laura Tollersky, 5 Shakespeare Road. I'm a state representative representing Ward 8. I decided to come this evening because of the large amount of misinformation, accusations, and mistruths that have been circulating about the acquisition of the property in the North End. I, like many people here, have serious concerns about this acquisition of real estate by a foreign adversary and competitor. However, it's important that the facts are what we actually discuss and consider, not the rumors and fabrications. The original stories that spread had misleading false headlines and information, as well as an alleged satellite map of the location with nearby sensitive sites nearby, and that photo is fabricated and, in fact, appears to not even be the city of Nashua. I want to be clear and reinforce what the mayor and others have already stated tonight. This was a private real estate sale. At the time of the purchase, the city of Nashua had no legal authority, federal or state, to know about this sale or to stop it. No power, period. I know this because, being in the legislature, we have taken up this issue last term and again this year. A bill that potentially would have addressed this issue, Senate Bill 162, passed the Senate and was stalled and retained in the House Commerce Committee. One of the co-sponsors on that bill has been a vocal critic of this city's perceived inaction. I find his criticism difficult to understand since he signed on to the actual bill that would have allowed the state to block a sale like this. The new budget, just signed into law, does address this issue for similar, similar sales moving forward. We need to get back to vetting and understanding facts. Jumping to conclusions and spreading rumors and misinformation based on a headline from a shared social media post is not being a responsible citizen. I am hopeful local leaders, state, and elected officials continue to work together to ensure that any potential threats are fully assessed and addressed to protect the interests of our community and nation. And I thank you for your time and your, I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight and your continued attention to the matter.
Thank you. Paula Johnson.
I didn't hear you. My brain is going so much wrong this night. I mean, it's just overwhelming, I guess. My name is Paula Johnson. I live at 15 Westbourne Drive. I just want to say to the board, thank you for bringing in the CEO of Penechuk and bringing everything to light tonight. Because, you know, I'm not on either side on this. I'm just want to do the facts on what's going on here. Because I remember back when a Chinese businessman and a lawyer from Virginia bought the Daniel Webster College right near the airport. Nobody made a big to-do about that. Nothing happened, and it went through. And I remember one of the Aldermen tried to have the city buy it versus having a businessman, and that didn't happen. But, what we have to do here is that we have to look at this head-on and see what's going on. There is no laws that says outside countries cannot buy, and if they did, they would have a lawyer or business, they'll set up an LLC, and they'll buy, and you'll never know who bought it. So, unless we want this not to happen, then we need to change the laws at the federal level and at the state levels completely, so this cannot happen again. Is it by our pawns? We've been assured by the CEO of Penechuk, and we also know that the PUC oversees everything completely. We have strict regulations, and I sat on this board when the whole thing started with Penechuk, with Attorney Bolton and President Wilshire. When that whole thing started, that we wanted to make sure the French company did not buy Penechuk water. And it went on for years. And that's how dedicated this city was to make sure it stayed out of foreign hands. And I do not believe that with the oversights, and I'm not saying our government, that state, local, or city is perfect by any stretch of the means, we know that, but I think that the regulation's in place and where we're all now very focused on this, that we will fight to make sure that nothing happens to our water supply, and that we will be watching Penechuk and the board here to make sure it stays in the right hands. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Al Falcino.
Good evening. Al Falcino, Pine Hill Road, Hollis, New Hampshire. Thank you for letting me speak, even though I'm an out-of-towner. I appreciate what the mayor and many of the Aldermen and the head of Penechuk have done this evening to educate everybody on the role that the community has and their limitations. I appreciate that you gave us the advice to consult state legislators and officials. And if I may ask, I ask all of you before us to join us, join us, excuse me, and actually lead the way to stop this nonsense, because the most important issue that goes right to the core of this matter is that every Chinese company is obligated to their government and their military for whatever needs they deem necessary. We are not dealing with a Japanese company, an African company, a friendly company. So, essentially, what you have with this building and the drone company that owns the land over at Daniel Webster is you have two stealth Chinese Communist government military, I'll say bases, whatever you want to, whatever you want to call it. In the last year, we've learned that three Chinese students have been caught coming, bringing into America dangerous agricultural funguses. Again, we ask that you join in on your recommendations to reach out to state and even federal officials, and we ask that you step up to protect Nashua moms, Nashua childrens, area residents. Again, this is not a friendly country we're dealing with, and they require their companies to adhere to whatever their national long-term goals are. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Aaron Penfleck? I'm sorry, I can't read the last name.
I'm Aaron Penfleck. I'm on Dow Road in Hollis. And we've heard a lot about concerns regarding water availability and quality, et cetera, here tonight. But, something that hasn't been mentioned yet at all is the national security risks of higher presence of Chinese citizens in our country. We have, so there's also, I would suggest to you that this whole transaction is actually a violation of federal law, and I've heard no mention of that here tonight. There's a law called CFIUS. I don't know if you're familiar with that. You should be. It's the, it's the Committee on Foreign Investment in the United States. A subset of that is the Foreign Investment Risk Review Modernization Act of 2018. These are existing federal laws. The second one I mentioned, Firma, requires, if three criteria are met, that you go through a CFIUS and Firma review. This purchase meets all three of those requirements, and I have been able to find no evidence that these reviews were done. The first of those three things is that the located real estate is within certain distances of sensitive sites, such as ports and airports, as defined by DHS and FAA, military installations per DoD list, and you can go look the list up, which can be 99 miles from the site that's purchased. Oh, by the way, in Joint Force Cape Cod, which is actually in Sandwich, is in that zone, right? Other national security-sensitive locations identified by regulation. So, we have BAE systems, and by the way, I'm a retired vice president and CTO at BAE, and I know for a fact that the work that goes on at Canal Street, which is well within that zone, and the work that goes on in Merrimack, which is a campus I ran for 15 years, is all highly classified sensitive information, both in the Title 10 DoD community and the Title 50 intelligence community, right? And nobody looked at this, right? The second criteria is the covered transaction, whoever purchases it, if they have physical access to the property, if they have the ability to exclude others from the property, or the ability to substantially alter or improve the property. That's the second box that you have to check.
30 seconds.
To require a CFIUS and Firma risk assessment. Okay? If they're going to convert this to a water bottling plant, they're certainly going to have to do all those things. The third one is there are some exemptions of the countries, Australia, Canada, and UK. I don't see China on that list. You can go look at the congressional record, just like I did. This transaction violates federal law, and you need to remedy that and put this through a transaction analysis. It can be, this, this purchase can be reversed, because if they find a national security risk.
Your time is up, sir.
If they find a national security risk, they can force a divestiture of this property, and that's what needs to happen.
Thank you. Liz Babour? Liz Babour?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Liz Barber. I live at 5 Broad Street in Hollis, New Hampshire. I'm a state representative for District 35. The property at 80 Northwest Boulevard lies within Nashua's borders but shares the Penechuk Waterway with Hollis, a critical source of drinking water for our region. Any sale of strategically-located land to entities tied to nations hostile to the United States has the potential to affect not only Nashua's security and the infrastructure, but also our water supply, public safety, and overall well-being. Senator Avard has sounded the alarm in New Hampshire and co-sponsored a new state law enacted in July of 2025 that prohibits the sale of land to foreign interests within 10 miles of protected facility. The law also gives the state the authority to seize property belonging to foreign companies or nationals if it is found within that boundary. It specifically lists China, Russia, Iran, Syria, and North Korea as prohibited nations. This is a significant step forward for New Hampshire, but is not enough to address every scenario, especially in a city like Nashua, where we have strategic infrastructure, water resources, and economic assets that could be of foreign, of interest to foreign-controlled buyers. In light of the questions surrounding this purchase, I'm asking this board to create a standing committee dedicated to monitoring and evaluating property transactions that may have national security implications. With a strong committee and a clear process, you can establish a formal channel to alert state and federal agencies, and as Alderman Moran suggests, contact the governor directly. Officials at every level in Nashua should be briefed on the new state law, the Committee on Foreign Investment in the United States, and the Foreign Investment Risk Review Modernization Act, and specifically which entities within Nashua borders could fall under their jurisdiction. Without that understanding, we risk missing critical warning signs, as was the case with the purchase of 80 Northwest Boulevard by a Chinese national for four times the assessed value of the property. This is not about blocking legitimate investment. It's about protecting our cities, our economy, and our residents from strategic acquisitions that may put critical infrastructure, public safety, and national security at risk. By being proactive, Nashua will ensure that when the next purchase comes along, we're not scrambling to understand it after the fact. We are prepared to act. Thank you for your time and for considering ways to keep Nashua secure and strong.
Thank you. Sue Homola? Sue Homola?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sue Homola, Mendelson Drive in Hollis. Thank you for the opportunity to let me come here and speak to your meeting. I wanted to say thank you to the gentleman who actually had supported the effort to allow speakers to speak a little bit earlier than, than right now. I just want to say we appreciate that and your standouts among this board. Some of the comments made tonight made it seem like Nashua is just a vassal city, you know, at the whims of whatever the state development board does. But, to be honest with you, Nashua has a business and industrial development authority on its own, and I'm going to assume that some of this information would come through. Maybe not. Okay. Well, maybe that's something that could be worked on, because I do know that Mayor Donches, you're on that, along with two Aldermen, so maybe that's an opportunity for, for there should be some communication with Nashua and the state. Another thing, one of the things that actually Nashua does have control over is the planning, the planning aspect of this. I do know, because I called the mayor's office to try to get correct information, and was told that any business that wants to, to, any business that is starting here, they have to put in a permit, and that permit gets approved. I was told that the bottling company, the Chinese bottling company, actually put in a permit and then pulled it the very next day. But, that's something within that Nashua can do, is to be very, very curious about some of the planning permits that you all get. of the planning permits that you all get. I know that it was mentioned, the Chinese company called Rotor, but that is actually quite a significant issue. I'm not sure you're aware, but at the Nashua Airport, this company called Rotor is developing autonomous, full-sized helicopter drones for payload capacity, and it's under the, under the very understandable thing and probably very earnest effort for agricultural spraying with an effort to continue that on. But as it was mentioned before as well, it is a Chinese-owned company. Any Chinese-owned company is going to be holding to, to its home country and to its home country needs. And if those needs ever change, then that would be right at our doorstep, a full-size autonomous helicopter drone that has the ability for payload. So one of the things I do appreciate, Mayor Donches, I do appreciate you discussing Daniel Webster, and, you know, one of the things I would like to suggest is that maybe there's an opportunity to talk to one of your longtime constituents, Governor Aot. I know that they just announced that there's an FAA program going to happen at Nashua Community College. Maybe perhaps that there's some opportunity there to meet those together, maybe for dorm space, maybe for extra training space. But thank you again for the opportunity to speak at your meeting tonight.
Thank you. Lily Tang Williams?
Thank you for having me here. I am a resident of Ware, and I am currently 2026 Congressional candidate for Second District.
Name and address for the record, please.
252 Pine Hill Road in Ware. I'm here as a proud American citizen by choice, a proud Granite Stateer. I want to explain to you why I'm so concerned about this. It's not because of politics. It's because I do understand my native country, People's Republic of China. After opening up economically, because they were facing collapse of economy after Mao's Cultural Revolution where I grew up, they did the economical reform. I understand that Western countries, including the United States, think that China will become democracy like us, so the economy got better, and we do trade with them. But I'm telling you, politically, it's a same political dictatorship country controlled by CCP called the China Communist Party. They have a national law and intelligence law. It go beyond the borders to mandate their companies, their nationals, their citizens overseas to comply, or they will threaten their families, lock them up, and seize their assets. I'm not saying all Chinese are bad here doing business or going to schools, but they have no choice. Doesn't matter if they agree with the party or not. They are facing serious risk in China. Plus, I know the CCP has China dream. It's not people's dream. It's a party's dream to take over United States as the number-one global power in the world by 2049, including potentially invading Taiwan. If we open up our country for 10 years now in the past, I've been following them, I'm very concerned that we are facing the number-one threat from biggest adversary country called Communist China with fascist government. So we want to urge the federal government coming to review, investigate this project, but same time, we want to urge all the elected officials for the safety of Granite Stateers, water supplies, and national security. We need basically to urge the public, increase awareness, and call on our leader to step up while the federal government is working on it. Another thing I want to tell you, that the Chinese own three big lands purchased already: Nashua, Daniel Webster College, and Chester College of New Hampshire College. And UNH had the Chinese-funded Confucius Institute on our campus for over 12 years. We've got a serious China problem, and they threaten me, they want to shut me down from my native country, but I have free speech. So if they could even give me that threat as American citizen who speaks truth in this country, what else they cannot do to the other people who, who don't maybe have the majority to speak up in China or in US? So this is serious. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I do have the map and my comments and complete the two page. Please pass around. Thank you.
Okay, the next person signed up is Jay, and it looks like Claire, but I could be pronouncing it wrong, the writing isn't legible. Okay, we're going to move on to Connor Morrell.
Point of order?
Alderman Clemmons.
I just want to make sure that if somebody's down, I don't know how big the audience is still, but if somebody's downstairs, that they do, if they happen to come up, that they still have the opportunity to speak, even if we move on.
Also, Madam President, point of order, I know that you had mentioned that there were some people on the other list, that maybe they confused the list.
I put them back on this list.
You did?
Yeah.
All right, okay.
I couldn't fit them in where they might have shown up, but they were signed up on the wrong list.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Connor Morrell, 68, East Pearl Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. Shout out to Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Rand, a few people that seem to be taking this super seriously, and, you know, thank you very much. I won't beat you guys up too much. I just did want to narrow in on one thing that I saw and heard earlier, which is that facts matter. Facts definitely matter, and there is definitely a fact that China is outpacing the United States GDP two to one and have, what, like 10 times the population? And they just bought land next to where we have water and get our water from, which, you know, I understand we can make a million, we can make 2 million happen, but what happens in 10 years? What happens when their need to expand is bigger than what we can afford? I don't have to study what Coca-Cola did to Mexico's water to know what kind of loaded gun we're looking down. So it just seems like to give that, you know, power to a foreign adversary is just, I mean, look at us, you know? We're normal people, we're pretty freaked out by it, and here we are at 10 o'clock, still here, still freaked out by this. So, you know, I guess I just, I implore you guys, do something about it, you know? Please. Eminent domain, I mean, you said it yourself, if there's something that you can do, whether it turn it into a park, I mean, I would love to go have somewhere to raise a family and bring them to play that's, you know, not being controlled by a foreign adversary. That sounds pretty incredible. So, you know, please, hear us, do something about it, and if you're not willing to do something about it to make this city better and more secure, I do think it says quite a bit about you guys. So please, I implore you, listen to us, you know? It's 10 o'clock, and, you know, I don't see anyone, you know, going home anytime soon. So thank you for your time, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. I'm going to call for Jay Clay or Claire one more time. Okay, we'll move on to Bob Lozo.
Before I start, I just wanted to say, did the people downstairs, I think somebody mentioned it earlier, did the people downstairs get a chance to put their name on the list? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
My name is Bob Lozo. I live on First and Street in Nashua, New Hampshire. I've been a resident and taxpaying citizen since I've been an adult, and I've lived in Nashua, I love Nashua, I love this country. And first and foremost, I want to thank you for praying, because without prayer, we're all sunk. I want to thank you for saying the Pledge of Allegiance. There's a lot said in that Pledge of Allegiance, and I just want to ask you, Alderman and Mr. Mayor, did you read the emails that I sent you a couple days ago? Okay, good, because there's a lot in there. I'd like to read that again, please. Dear Mayor James Donches and City Alderman, first, I want to thank Lily Tang Williams and Senate to Kevin Avar and News Nation and WMUR and everyone else who has been involved with bringing this very important concern to light. While taking 2 million gallons of water per day from our drinking water system, or maybe only 1 million still, that's a lot of water, this is very concerning. As a citizen of Nashua, as citizens of Nashua along with the surrounding towns of city, our major concern is our local, state, and national security. NF North American, which is owned by the CCP, the Chinese Communist Government, clearly and obviously strategically purchased 80 Northwest Boulevard for the following reasons. It's very close, only 8.3 miles from the FAA Center, which controls the air traffic for our entire northeastern United States. It's next door to the National Airport. It's next door to L3 Harris, a US National Defense contractor on 85 Northwest Boulevard. It's only 2.3 miles to 11.3 miles from BAE System, which is another major national defense contractor. It's only eight, it's only 5.2 miles from Albert Systems in Merrimack, which is a national defense contractor. It's only 13.8 miles from USA, US Air Force Peterson Space Station in New Boston, very critical location, as I'm sure you all agree. They monitor the air traffic in the space.
30 seconds.
Okay? It's less than 100 miles from the US military base. So I ask you, and on and on, there's a lot of, lot of things going on here with our national defense. Being so close to these national defense contractors and less than 100 miles from the Army Base at Cape Cod is definitely a national security situation. So I ask you, please.
Time is up.
Be a voice. Mr. Mayor, you, you said before we're in the wrong place. I'm coming to you as a citizen, to the Alderman.
Sir, your time is up.
Okay, just one, one second, please. This is for the sake of our city, okay?
There are a lot of people that want to speak.
Please, okay, I know. Please, go to, go to the governor, go to the state senators. I tried, I couldn't, they didn't get back to me. Please go to them and be a voice for us, for our national defense. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Stephen Scaire, 111 East Hobart Street. Attendant to what we're discussing tonight about the purchase of the land near Pennechuck, I had some concerns about Alderman Tebow's newsletter, and I hope they're constructive. He describes Lily Tang Williams as a failed congressional candidate and suggests that putting this in the national spotlight was wrong and reckless, and a clear campaign stunt by Williams. Describing her as a failed congressional candidate is a bit like describing Abraham Lincoln as a failed senatorial candidate. If you look her up, she's a woman of amazing accomplishments. She grew up in poverty under Mao Zedong and the Cultural Revolution, her parents were illiterate, and she went on to be one of the top scholars in China before coming here and fighting for freedom after seeing how wonderful it was. And I think by putting things pejoratively, we, we don't get off to a good start in discussing these things, and she, we could also need to listen to her just because she has so much to say and so much knowledge. His newsletter also said that other towns regarding public meetings and discussions like this, Manchester, you get to speak once at their Alderman meetings, and it has to be to the agenda. I spoke there a couple months ago about something that was on my mind, my concern, and it wasn't on the agenda. And what they do, and what Derry, New Hampshire does, and it's pretty wonderful, is the leaders of the towns and the city set aside half an hour for citizens to bring in and discuss whatever they want. Of course, you hear some angry people, but you hear a lot about good things that are going on and maybe things that haven't come to your attention. So it might be a good idea to look for having the kind of freedom of speech that they have in Manchester, New Hampshire, so that people can speak. Something else I want to know is when I spoke, people listened to me respectfully, and I appreciated that. And I checked and waited for the comments afterwards, and no one ridiculed me, which of course has happened here. So regarding listening to Lily Tang Williams and listening to our citizens, I think that we can do that in a spirit of respect and get further in discussing these important issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth Scaire, 111 East Hobart Street. I'm here to speak about Alderman Dowd's proposed ordinance on prohibiting banners, flags, and signs at meetings. At the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee meeting on August 4th, Alderman Kelly unconstitutionally shut down Lori Ordolano while she was giving public comment about that ordinance. Lori's small signs use the word sucks, ass, and asshat. Alderman Kelly says that rude or vulgar comments are prohibited during public comment in Manchester and Nashua. That is false. The rules for Nashua's public comments says excessive repetition and irrelevant remarks are discouraged, profane and obscene remarks are prohibited. You can read it for yourself, there's no mention of rude or vulgar comments. I am asking Alderman Kelly to apologize to Lori and refrain from restricting her public comments in the future. It was also claimed at that meeting that Manchester's Board of Aldermen restricts vulgar public comments, and this is also false. The rules for Manchester's public comments says speakers are encouraged to be civil in their language and presentation, true threats and the use of fighting words are prohibited. Thank you to my Alderman, Alderman Senate, for defending our freedom of speech at that meeting. And in a recent newsletter, Alderman Tebow said, "Signs are always stunts, there's no need for him. He wants to shut down any visual aid at all." That is not even in the proposed ordinance and is extreme and anti-first amendment. Would he ban my Save Women's Sports shirt? There's been so much false information brought up about Manchester and Nashua's public comments. I recommend to all the Nashville Aldermen that you do some research before proposing new ordinances on public comment, or before chairing a meeting where you might unconstitutionally shut down a speaker during public comment. I request that Alderman Dowd take into account input from the New England First Amendment Coalition and the ACLU, New Hampshire, on the sign ordinance, so Nashua does not get sued. To change topics, my husband and I attended the anti-Trump Rage Against the Regime Rally on Library Hill, and my husband was assaulted when an attendee hit him on the face with his sign, unprovoked. Ward 8 Representative Will Darby was one of the organizers of the event, and he walked this fellow to his car. I followed to get his license plate number, and it was clear that Representative Darby was acquainted with this person. When the police were on their way, I asked Representative Darby to wait a few minutes so he could identify the perpetrator to the police, but he left right before the police arrived. This is a serious failure on his part. He did not have to provide us this person's name, but he's obstructing a police investigation by leaving before the police got there to take our report. It is not too late for Representative Darby to do the right thing and share the perpetrator's identity with the Nashville police so they can complete their investigation of the assault.
Virginia Karloskis. Sorry about the pronunciation.
Virginia Karloskis, 50 Haynes Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. I think, like many other people, I think, it sounds like we all have concerns about this whole situation with a Chinese company owning something, selling something as precious as water-based products in our, in our town. Specifically, this company is within the 100-mile radius for foreign investments, being near like control centers, airports, defense contractors, military installations. I'm kind of just reiterating a lot of stuff that's already been said, but obviously, I think we all have our concerns about it, and it would be prudent for us all to research and look into it and try to stop them from moving forward if we can. It seems like there is the potential for changing this whole situation if they are breaking laws. I don't know if that means that we need to go to a higher, higher place or next step to get there. If that's the case, then I guess everyone in the room should, should speak up and do that as well. So I would like to thank everyone here for spending the time and listening to everybody and making this a worthwhile time, and hopefully we can get it resolved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Kim Aponte, two fifty-eight East Dunstable Road. I am here to request the rescission of a purchase and sale and the refund of my ten thousand dollar deposit for the purchase of Nineteen New Sales Road at the public auction. I just wanted to, I made a few bullet points of why I'm requesting this. So first and foremost, there were a few irregularities during the auction. Upon signing the purchase and sale, the auctioneer directly told me himself that they had made, that the company had made the title free and clear, and that I would have no issues with the title in regards to insurance. Upon running the title with Old Republic Title with our attorney, it shows that the previous owner Irene Davis appears to have passed in 2014. Her son passed in, I believe, 2020, and notice was not effectively, effectively made until after these dates. Title shows also that there was a welfare lien filed under her son's name in 2016. There are also numerous other small issues which gives multiple parties ownership rights over me as a buyer. This unfortunately requires a quiet title in order to resolve this issue. My attorney told me that if the quiet title was ineffective and the property were awarded to any of these other parties, I actually wouldn't receive a refund on the purchase price or any value or improvements that I make to the property, and I also will not recoup the cost of trying to obtain the quiet title in the first place. My motive for this was to restore and resell the property. Any new buyer also won't be able to get any type of owner's or lender's title insurance policy as well. The property was purchased in good faith. This is not the first housing project that I take part in to help improve the city, nor will it be my last, hopefully. But given the high risk involved here, it's not financially prudent nor ethically responsible for me to be able to move forward. This property is a burnt-down home. It's an eyesore. My, my goal was to restore it, you know, bring the value back to the neighborhood, give housing, but unfortunately, that's just not the case with these issues. Forfeiting the deposit would be a hardship, hardship for me and my family. I do take pride in doing this, but I, this is also my livelihood. I have three young children. I am a Nashua homeowner, so my only option here is to resign from this. However, losing the ten thousand dollar deposit will be a very detrimental to me and my family. So I am requesting the rescission of the PNS and the refund, and that's it. Thank you for hearing me tonight.
Thank you. Joe Grable?
My name is Joe Grable. My address is fifteen Sumner Lane in Hollis. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am recently retired from the Department of Defense as a Foreign Threat Risk Assessment Officer. In this work, this work included foreign threats from China against U.S. critical infrastructure. National intelligence and law enforcement assessments state that Chinese-owned entities under CCP control do in fact threaten U.S. critical infrastructure. Now, the Pennechuck Water Works is by anyone's definition U.S. critical infrastructure, and its infrastructure we all here have a big stake in. Now, what's not commonly known is that the CCP has publicly threatened Zhang Shen Shen, the owner of Nongfu Water. He's obviously under the CCP's control. The CCP could therefore use Nongfu Water to threaten Pennechuck Water Works, given certain conditions in world geopolitics. To what extent? Well, we don't know. And much has been said about what the city can and can't do. The city may not be able to change much about Nongfu Water purchase, but it can do a couple of things. It can request a threat risk assessment on Pennechuck Water Works from the state or national agencies like the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency. That's CISA. The city can do that. And the city can enact safeguards of the water supply to mitigate threats posed by foreign-owned entities such as those controlled by the CCP. Alderman Moran's letter sounds like a good start. May I respectfully suggest that that letter contain a request for an independent threat risk assessment for Pennechuck Water Works, and that following that risk assessment, that the city enact safeguards that it can control of the Pennechuck Water Works. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lou Juris? Lou Juris?
Yeah, I don't see him back there. He was back there. Okay. Ken Siegel?
Hi, everybody. Familiar location. My name is Ken Siegel, seven three South Wilder Lowell. Hello, everybody. I'm a thirty-four-year resident of Nashua and a four-year member of the board. I am actually not going to talk about the Chinese effect and espionage or John le Carré-type novel stuff, but I'm going to try to answer the question, or I'm going to speculate as to why four X the valuation. And I think it's going to be kind of interesting because I spent a lot of time in the Edgar database for the SEC and also the state's finance databases. I think what you'll find is that that property was bought eleven years ago. It was never leased, and they're paying two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars a year. That's just a sunk cost. That doesn't include maintenance. It doesn't include all sorts of utilities, everything associated with it. It's a lot of money. Now, all that money shows up on the bottom line, and when you put your K ones out because the company that owns it is a real estate investment trust and it's publicly traded. And that gave me the advantage of being able to see a bunch of things in the Edgar database, which is the database of the SEC, all of their filings. The two largest shareholders of the original owner are Vanguard and BlackRock. Together, they own twenty-seven percent of the seller. And so every time that K one showed up, they're taking quite a hit, and the depreciation on the real estate ain't going to wash away that kind of money. And these guys don't play, as you know, you know? And so they have a lot of say in what happens, and that real estate investment trust is, I think, ninety-seven percent institutionally owned? So these guys' livelihoods depend on keeping BlackRock and Vanguard happy. Well, guess what? Nongfu Water is owned eighty-four point four percent by one Chinese billionaire, but guess who the largest two shareholders external are on the Hong Kong Stock Exchange? BlackRock and Vanguard. So what's basically happened is, my speculation is that those guys said to him, "Look, we're getting tanked here, you know, and you got to make this whole." And so what they did was they just quadrupled the price because that's just a left-hand feed in the right-hand money, and since Nongfu shares surged about thirty-something percent last year on the Hong Kong Stock Exchange, that money was like play money, and it wasn't worth the headache for this guy because he probably didn't care one way or the other. So I don't think that there's a lot of mystery and kind of like the Chinese government trying to infiltrate by paying four times the amount. I think it's really quite as simple as, as that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the last speaker we have signed up is Avalon?
I'm Avalon, twenty-two King Street, Nashua. I'm also the vice chair of the Nashville Republican City Committee. I want to talk about the Pennechuck situation. This first came on my radar when a constituent called me and asked me about it, and I had no idea, so I started looking, looking into it, asking questions, calling around, talking to people, and I've heard a number of different stories. I do have to agree with the mayor because, as he said, this is politics, and there are a lot of wild stories out there. As far as I was concerned, I could, I would ignore about half of the stories that I've heard and then question the other half. But I made some calls, and the one call that I didn't make was to the mayor's office. Alderman Cleese said, "Well, all you need to do is to call the mayor's office." I have a letter here from a constituent, a resident of Nashua that says that she called the mayor, the mayor's office, and a female answered the phone, and the caller begun to explain her, explain her concern, and the answerer, the person in the mayor's office says, "We are not a dictatorship. This was a private sale." And they should continue to say that we have a president that's taken away our freedoms every day. First of all, let aside, but that's what was brought up. And then, before the caller can continue with her concern, the answerer says, "Goodbye," and abruptly hang up. Now, mayor, if this is the, if this is the way your staff is trained to deal with people calling your office, which your office services Nashua, your office should respond to Nashua's residents, all residents, Republican and Democrat.
Thirty seconds.
Now, as far as this four-time speculation goes, I don't know about that. I agree with Mr. Moran that a letter to the governor would, would be a good idea. I do agree with that. Again, I called around to some people, and I got some good advice. One, one piece of advice that I got was that the city of Nashua is obligated to provide water services to any structure in Nashua. Thank you for it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment period. I'm going to go around, remarks by the members of the board. Alderman O'Brien, I'm going to start over here.
I'm good, thank you.
Alderman Moran?
No, I have something to say.
Alderwoman Timmons?
This is good. I want to congratulate the Spottens, Drum, and Bruegel for coming in, World Champion, Gold Star. They won three consecutive years. Paula Flame won Director of the Year. We should congratulate because they did a great job, and they will be marching in the Thanksgiving Parade this year.
Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. It's, it is Alderman Moran. If it had been any other speaker, I would have taken it personally, but Avalon would have made such low, low eyebrow, low brow jokes.
Sorry, could you repeat that?
We're still meeting?
Yeah. It's actually, it's Alderman Moran, and I don't think you would ever make a joke like that, so.
No.
Yeah, it is, yes.
As opposed to...
And if it had been anyone else, I would have taken it as a much more insincere.
I didn't mean, I didn't mean that.
No, I know, I'm joking. As most of the folks around here, I'm very jocular. It's frustrating for some. But I do appreciate Alderman Clemens reeling me in earlier. We did hear some great comments, and I've definitely been introducing some kind of resolution that will hopefully come forward to planning an economic development, which I chair, so we can try to exercise whatever authority we have to blunt the economic activity that adversary nation would have in the city and maybe even try to seek options for eminent domain if possible. But I want to thank everyone for coming out and speaking. I think it's great to talk it out, and it sounds like that's what happened. And I think, I don't think there's a single person in the room that doesn't agree that China's a problem, but let's focus that the fact that we have to shut down their progress to take over as the number one economy in the world, and we are not, we're not in a stage of life here in America that we can just turn a blind eye to stuff like this. We have to constantly be competing, and I really do mean it. When these internet trolls, they're, the rage baiters, they're the new liberal arts degree people who blame the government for not being able to pay their student loans. They're trying to get, add revenue for their social media websites, and no one jumps on board to get a trade and said, "I'm going to enlist," or "I'm going to build ships," or "I'm going to create the world's best electronic car." It's just fast money, and that's what we have to be mindful of. And, you know, in a previous generation, my great-grand aunt's still alive. She walked in for women's right to vote. She's over a hundred years old. If, you know, I told her about the, these basement boys, you know, she would cringe. That's not what they had in her generation. But I think it's, no matter what party you are, you have to realize that they are an economic enemy and potentially much more than that, and we have to take them seriously or else...
Russia too.
What was that?
Russia too.
Of course, Russia. That's never stopped being a thing, I hope. But anyone who, country that's run on communist ideals, we, we just can't be asleep at the wheel, because if we're asleep at the wheel, the only way we're going to experience the American dream is that, being asleep. And we owe it to our children to be awake.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you very much. I really wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight and witnessing what typically is just the bread and butter issues of, of city government, which is we move money around, we approve contracts. And typically, when people ask me what it's like to be an Alderman, I typically say that we don't usually get involved in global geopolitics. So tonight, kind of changed that up a little bit, but I do want to, I do appreciate everybody that, that came out. I, I do hope either through a news clip or whatnot that Governor Ayotte is watching. When I was first told of this, I was told, I didn't, I didn't know about it. I didn't know anything about it. I was on my heels, I think, like a lot of my colleagues here, and I truthfully said we don't have the resources at the city municipal level to do anything about it. The state and federal government do, and I hope that Governor Ayotte's watching, and I hope that she will help us in working together to, you know, either vet this fully, stay on top of it. I did like the suggestion about the, the threat assessment. I think that's a good idea. The biggest concern that I had was the fact that the property was assessed at fifteen million, sold for sixty-seven, and I thought, should the assessing department go back and redo the math on all the commercial property in the city because we're not getting what we should out of the property tax for commercial? Anyway, former Alderman Siegel with that, what I thought was a mic drop moment, and I really should have just go back to the lesson of follow the money. And it was, you know, I'm going to have to re-watch that because I thought that was very intelligent and well-laid out. And also, personal privilege, I wanted, I had the opportunity to witness the class of 2029 at the United States Military Academy. They finished their six-week basic training, and the class of 2029's motto is "Hold the Line." So I'm proud of those young cadets, about two thousand of them, as they start their journey at West Point. So I just want to say congratulations to them. Thank you.
Welcome. Alderman Clemens?
Thank you, Madam President. So I want to thank everybody who, who showed up tonight. I'm very, I, I guess, I'm, I'm happy that, that everybody came this evening and spoke. I'm always happy when people come to address the Board of Aldermen, particularly on things that, you know, aren't on our agenda. And certainly, this was not on our agenda at all, and not because, not because it's not an important topic, but because typically speaking, the city, again, when I was speaking earlier, was talking about how the, the city is a, or the state of New Hampshire is a Dillon Rule state, and the city really doesn't have any jurisdiction over a lot of these, these items. But what I heard this evening and what I was happy about and why I suggested that Alderman Moran hold off from the, from, you know, from us doing the letter ahead of time, was I, I was very happy to hear that, that the people who showed up tonight want us to address this to the higher state government, maybe the federal government as well, and bring our concerns on their behalf. And so while that typically is not something that this board does, where it affects something directly in Nashua and in property in Nashua and a concern in Nashua, I think it is appropriate. And so hearing the, all the concerns, I too, I, and I'm, and again, glad we waited to hear all the comments because... comments because I thought too that the threat security assessment was a pretty good idea as well. There were some other good ideas in there, and hopefully with Alderman Moran's, and I think the other one was the federal review of the purchase as well. So with, but with Alderman Moran's legislation coming forward, hopefully that gives us a vessel to work on and craft some kind of letter that goes to the state and maybe the federal government even, and, you know, and puts this in their hands and says, "You know what? Nashua is aware of what's going on. The citizens spoke up loud and clear. We're listening to the citizens, and we're basically forwarding this on to you to do your due diligence, pass state laws, do whatever is in the power to make sure that these concerns are addressed, not only for this moment, but also for the future." So I think, I want to, again, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I think this really gave us a good chance to address this. I do want to say, though, that it's a shame that it came to, that there was a lot of falsehoods around this and a lot of, you know, conspiracy theory-type things that, you know, like the false map and different, you know, we were going to sell Penachuk and all that crazy stuff. That's the kind of stuff that I wish we could get rid of, out of politics, right? Because it's one phone call to Penachuk or one phone call to an alderman, and we would have told you, Penachuk's not for sale. We're not going to sell it. And that dispels the rumor. And so for someone to go back out there and continue to repeat that, even though that's been stated, and other truths that, you know, or other falsehoods that were proven wrong, that's the kind of stuff we need to stop. And so I'm hoping that tonight we can all get on the same page, we can all be together in one force going forward with the truth and kind of move this situation forward in a way that says, "You know what? This community understands what's going on, and we want to address it, and we're going to bring it to the powers that be." So again, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Thank you for addressing your concerns to us, and I look forward to working with Alderman Moran and everyone else here on the letter to the governor and to anyone else who will listen to us.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to echo my colleagues' remarks in thanking for, everybody for coming out tonight. Towards the end of the public comment period, the word "productive" was used, and that's what I'm choosing to be my takeaway tonight, that this was a productive meeting. I feel like I'm going into the book of old adages tonight, but it's often said that there's three sides to every story. There's your side, there's my side, and then there's the truth. And I think if nothing else tonight, we're all a little collectively more close to the truth than we were coming in. And I think that's a good thing. That benefits us all. Alderman Moran has laid down the tracks for us to move forward. I'd be happy to join you in working on that because the public has given us a lot to consider what should be in that letter. And so I'd be happy to sign on with that once we get that moving. On a more somber note, I just want to take a moment, because we don't meet that often during the summer, to recognize the passing of Patty Bernard. Patty Bernard was a longtime assistant principal at Charlotte Ave Elementary School. She was certainly there during the '90s when I attended for a brief period of time, known very well for an infectious smile and infectious laugh. I know after, some point after I moved on, she had gone on to become a full-fledged principal. So I wanted to send condolences to her family and acknowledge her contributions to the community. Thank you.
Alderman Thibault.
Thank you, Madam President. So I too want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, whether I agree or don't agree. I think it's important that we hear from people of the city and a lot from surrounding towns as well to help us make decisions here. To the remarks that happened in public comment going after me, I would have liked to apologize to Ms. Williams, but she has already left, just because I know, I don't want to minimize her accomplishments, but, you know, we're all failed candidates till we win an election. Abraham Lincoln was a failed candidate at one point till he won an election. So I didn't say anything wrong there. As far as, you know, this whole thing started because she and our state senator, well, not my state senator, but the state senator of Nashua, Kevin Aver, who's not here, went crazy with the whole Chinese bot is buying Penachuk. And that's just false. So it, to me, was a stunt. When you don't find the facts first and you go on Newsmax and you go to the magazines without getting facts, that's a stunt. I'm sorry. It just is. I'm happy that the scares get my newsletter. I'm obviously going to have to look into who I'm sending it to and cut that out completely. Maybe some of you won't get it anymore if I do that because I know other people here get it that I don't send it to. So I'm going to, I think I'm going to have to look at that because I try to use it as something for my constituents to help them see what's going on in the city, links to meetings and things like that. But apparently, you know, the scares like to have stunts as well, and they use my newsletter against me, so maybe I need to pare that down.
Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to follow my colleagues' leads and thank everybody who came out and everybody who's still continuing to stay here. And I agree with my colleague who said that this was a productive meeting. And I'd like to also, you know, say that we do have to fear, you know, certain entities that have too much power in this country. We talk about different foreign bodies buying up too much of our land, being too close to different, you know, federal organizations, defense-type of things and so on. We need to even talk about different things such as TikTok, that, you know, we've talked about getting rid of that, and I think that's something that should go away. They're collecting data and so on. We keep pushing that forward and forward and forward. I think that's something that should, that should go away, and I think that's a conversation that needs to be had, not here in this chamber, mind you, but something that should, that should be had and so on. I also want to talk about when they talk about this being too close to the water supply. Our water supply is the Merrimack River. That is where we're getting the water, not the ponds. We're not using the ponds, to the best of my knowledge. We're using the Merrimack River. Those ponds are not being used. So let's make that very clear. This is not near the water supply. They're not going to be poisoning the water supply by being there. And as far as the reference to BIDA, BIDA is just a tiny little organization that is not this business district. It's just a tiny little group that, if the person who spoke to it, if they really looked into it, they would realize it's just a little tiny committee that does this small little projects. It's not our development within the city. So that's different than what the state has. And speaking of that, when all this conversation and all this controversy happened, no one pointed to the fact of what the precipice of this was, and that was, again, the Sununu Economic Development Plan. That seemed to be gone from the conversation, and that's why I think we tend to look at this as, I don't want to call it a stunt, but I want to call it as that it was politically motivated, and the fact that they didn't come to the city and they didn't come to Penachuk. My colleague said that when, when he first heard of it, he went back on his heels, so did I. And the first thing I did was I reached out to Mr. Bovier. And I called him and I said to him, "Can you talk to me about this? We're not selling, right? This is not..." And he was immediately, "No, absolutely not. Couldn't even happen in a million years." And we had this long conversation. You know, I kind of chuckled, but at the same time was concerned that I was hearing all of these things. But I went right to the source, made sure that there was nothing that I was missing, and, you know, I put that all to bed, and I immediately put something out to my constituents to say, "All those rumors that you're hearing is not true. I even spoke about it here in the chamber," and that was months and months ago. And then suddenly, it took on a life of its own. And that's why I get a little perturbed by it. I do believe that we should be reaching out to the state and saying, "Hey, you know, look into this. Tell us what's going on," because that's where it can be done. So while I really appreciate everybody coming out here, you all need to take another step too. You all need to be writing to the governor. You all need to be writing to the executive councilor. There was a state rep that was here. You all need to be talking to your state rep. You're all from Hollis. She was here. Speak to her. They're the ones that stalled that, and it had to be built into the budget. I was a state rep. I know what that is, hiding something into the budget. Why didn't they pass that, that particular SB? Why didn't they pass that? You know, it just, it kind of irks me that they hid it and they didn't follow through with it. So if they really mean to do this, they could have followed through with it. So please, talk to the state. You've talked to us, and our hands are tied other than to do the same thing you're doing. Write a letter. They're the ones that can take action. They're the ones you need to be speaking to. They're the ones that can actually do something. So please, take it a step further. You've spent all this time here with us, and this is wonderful. I appreciate it. But please, take it further. Talk to your state legislator. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd, you're all set?
All set.
Committee announcements.
Tomorrow night, here in the Aldermanic Chamber, we'll be continuing work with the Joint Committee of Infrastructure and the Police Commission on their training facility, and I think it starts at 7:00 PM.
6:00.
6:00. Okay. Thank you. I will be here for 6:00.
Alderman Sullivan.
I hope so. You're the chair.
Alderman Sullivan.
The little committee that could, BIDA, meets, of which I am a proud aldermanic liaison of, meets tomorrow morning, 9:00 AM, Room 208, right here in fabulous City Hall.
No one else? Okay.
I'll have to turn the air conditioning back on.
We are at this point that we are going to go into a non-public. Alderman Thibaut, do we have a motion?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Aldermen go into non-public session by roll call pursuant to RSA 91A:3, Roman numeral 2, aye. Consider, that's a lot, consideration of matters relating to the preparation for and the carrying out of emergency functions, including training to carry out such functions developed by local or state safety officials that are directly intended to thwart a deliberate act that is intended to result in a widespread or severe damage to property or widespread injury or loss of life.
Alderman Senate.
I second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons? Oh.
She said yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Thibaut?
Yes.
Alderman Gavilla?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Senate?
Yes.
Alderman Thibault?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly left the meeting at 9:48 for the record, and Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
12 yeas, 0 nays.
And that motion carries. Can we take a break? Well, I'd rather not take a break. I'd rather clear the room.
Well, I mean, Alderman left, right?